I will appeal to the Tuesday, May 13th Regular Meeting. City Council, stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is a republic for which it stands, one nation, under a individual of liberty and justice for all.
All right. Need a motion in a second for the agenda?
Can we make a motion?
Second.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor, Members of Council, I have two items I need to change. One addition, which I sent out earlier today, item needed, item to consent, item J1, accepting the planning, the resignation of Planning Commission Member Nick Preisler, and approved posting for filling of the vacant Planning Commission seat. That'd be J1. And then, one item of change, just didn't know what the agenda, asking to move item N before item K, based on individuals being in the audience, trying not to have them here all night, so. Thank you.
Any more? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries five to zero. Consent, I need a motion. Oh, wait a minute.
One thing-
Presentation of fire poster.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. Sharon Panito, would you come on up here for me? Council and Mayor, Members of Council, this is Sharon. Sharon's in third grade at Dayton Elementary, and she entered the poster contest for the State Chiefs Association. She ended up, you can see her poster up here. A hundred and twenty posters were submitted-
Put that back!
-across the state, and for third grade, Sharon received first place.
Wow!
So congratulations to Sharon.
Congratulations!
There's your poster. The other thing is, is that the State Chiefs Association gave the winner of that a check for seventy-five dollars, so there's a check for you. Spent it on good things. And then, we also will be seeing the State Chiefs Association's Spring Magazine, her picture, or poster will be on the front cover, so we'll have a couple of those to get to you once they come in, make sure we get them to you, and we sincerely appreciate your participation in an awesome job.
Yay!
Nicest slide we've seen all night.
On to consent. Need a motion in a second.
Can we make a motion?
I'll second.
Stephanie, any discussion?
I...I have a question, but I think I can wait till we get to that, so.
I do have a question, not necessarily, just a comment, basically. I personally don't have a problem with the Magnus deal, however, this per one event is using about twenty-five percent of the money that we allotted for these. So I guess it, we just gotta be cognizant of how much of this goes on.
Yeah, that's an estimate, because we're slotting, I guess, based on last year's numbers. I don't know if it'll be the same, less or more, but it is good to note, and I appreciate the note that, yeah, it is roughly twenty-five percent of the budget that was passed for these type of items.
Yep. That's all I got.
I just- Mine as well. Items D, E, and F are accepting donations related to something we're doing in the parks, and I'm wondering, dog treats, and I guess this is news to me, and I'm not in any way opposed to it, I'm just wondering what that's all about.
Yeah, I could touch on it a little bit, yeah, so our community event specialist's position decided and looked into, you know, one of the other ways to get people involved with the community overall, and she found that it would be really good to have a treat bin essentially, that would be covered for a year, and they would have a treat at, you know, treat bins around the city, and they would be sitting there, and then they would be filled with dog treats, so you can go out and grab a dog treat, and typically, there'll be a station for a waste bag or whatever right next to it, too. And so, the idea was that if you sponsored that, then you're able to fill that treat item for the year. We've had a really good response from it, overall. It was just an item kind of thrown out as a, you know, kind of throw it up the wall, see if it hit, see if it sticks, and it seemed to be a big hit from people. I don't know if Marty knows any more information about it either, because since she works with him directly, he'd see her every day about talking about it.
I think you covered it pretty well there. We've got the dog treat things in six different locations. The dispensers were fabricated by Public Works guys as well, and there's a, on the dispenser, there's a place to put an advertisement for the person who's sponsored the particular treat dispenser.
Are these also raccoon treat stations, or are they-
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, it's equal opportunity, you know?
Fair enough. I was just wondering if they're built, like, obviously not like bear boxes, but, you know, is there something to avoid that?
We haven't come across that issue yet, but if that does become something, then obviously we'll look at it. It's a flap on the top that needs to be lifted. I'm not sure how clever the raccoons are, but I'm sure they can figure it out and give us a challenge.
If we've got a cat that can open our doors now, so.
When I was planning my chicken coop, they said to assume a raccoon has the same intelligence and strength as a three-year-old.
Yep.
Oh! And dexterity, because they have little fingers, so.
Any other?
Mine is more, it might be updated online now, but I found resolution 29, 2025 twice, and I did not see resolution 33, 2025 at all in the packet that we got emailed, so I don't know if the one on the website has been updated.
Likely not.
Okay. So I don't-
And like she said, it's, yeah, the other donate, the other resolution's not in there.
Yeah, 33, 33, 2025 isn't in there at all, but it's accepting donations, so I didn't assume I was going to be strongly opposed to that, so I wasn't super worried about it, but just a clarity thing on that one.
If you do know those things, please let us know.
Okay.
Happy to adjust it and fix it if we know.
Yeah, I-
Sometimes when the package's put together, it's last minute and then we're throwing it out.
And I was looking at it last minute, we're all last minute, so I think the lesson for all of us is to maybe get our stuff together a little bit sooner, myself included. So, I may have done my last-minute prep at around three o'clock today, so I apologize on that end.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Any other? Item I, what, what is that? I mean, why, so it sounds like we're saying halftime is covered under benefits, and that's what I'm wondering.
Yep. I don't, yeah, much taken.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I don't have much information on this. I was informed that to get para taken out of and counted into your para, you had to do a blanket resolution for part-time officers to collect para while they're working part-time here.
Yeah, so essentially, Mayor, Members of Council, if you're part of para in another community, that is considered your, because you only get credit for one full-time work, right? And so, if you don't have a blanket resolution in a, in a community that has part-time work, you don't get credit for those dollars towards your top five. As we mentioned earlier, how you get your top five dollars for para. Currently, we have an officer here that's, doesn't get his money put towards his top five, because we don't have a blanket resolution. We've passed one in the past for an individual police officer, but not a blanket one that says any part-time officer can put that towards para. They can elect not to, but they can also elect to have it put into para, as in towards their top five salaries. So if they're working here, that's not counted, no, I'm gonna call it, it's against them, even though it's not against them.
So this has nothing to do with us funding benefits?
No.
It's just simply a statement?
Well, it's statement, and then they are now eligible for para, so we would have a contribution to para as well.
For them?
For them, yes, because now they're part of para, which we'd have to pay their seventeen-point-seven percent of their salary that they're earning here. And we budgeted that every year we've been here.
For part-time?
Yes.
What about other part-time employees?
What do you mean?
Well, I mean-
Other part-time employees, if they're employed in another city, and then they would have-
No, what I'm getting at is, so typically, like, where I work, if you don't hit the thirty-two hours, you don't get benefits.
Yep.
Is that different?
Absolutely, it would get benefits here, as in, like, health insurance, dental insurance-
It's just the para cost.
Just para contributions, and it's only based on the fact of the retirement, because you're still working for a local government. If we had another part-time employee that worked at Public Works or something, and they worked at Public Works in a different community, and then they worked here, they could technically collect para for that as well, but it's also them paying in, too, so they have to pay in their eleven-point-seven percent for an officer, or six-point-five if you're another, a different employee, a general employee. But it's not like it's benefits as in insurance, it's only para.
Right, it's just the retirement cost.
Yes.
Okay. So if you have a public works employee that only works for, for money-
Yep.
And he's-
They're already in para.
Thirty hours a week.
Then they are not beneficial, and they would be in para, but they'd be, based on their per-month salary, so if you're in over four-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month, or something like that, you have to be enrolled in para if you aren't earning a credit somewhere else. So you can only earn one service credit per month, ever.
Okay.
And then, obviously, the, the service credits only go towards your top five, because then it counts how many service credits you have, and that's your percentage that you receive.
To be fair, I worked part-time at Fleet Farm, literally four hours a week, four hours every other week, and I have a retirement account there, so like, it's not unreal, like, that's pretty standard, actually, that no matter how part-time you are, retirement, like, there is retire, like, and that account has all of, like, five dollars in it, so I'm not thinking on it for my retirement, but like, that's not unusual for a part-time job to have a retirement component. I don't get any benefits, so.
Yeah, from the, from the part-time officer's perspective, is I'm already working in a local government somewhere else, I'm not asking to earn more credit, I'm just asking to have my dollars come towards my retirement-
Sure.
-long-term, because I'm still working for another local government, essentially.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Consent passes five to zero, and we are on to new business, item N.
Hold on.
Oh, wait, I did skip, skipped a few things. Open forum. Open forum, anybody here for open forum? Limited to three minutes for non-agenda items. Come on forward. Stay your name and address, and-
Yep, yep. I don't need to write the second, just point it down.
And stay in name and address, no council action will be taken, and items will be referred back to staff.
Thurber Spontum, and address is 11250 East French Lake Road. Okay. I don't know how many of you are aware, I had a pole barn that burned last Labor Day weekend, all the way to the ground, and Fire Department did a great job, so I just want to give them kudos in person here. They, unfortunately, is a complete loss, and going through the insurance and all that has been quite challenging, right, to be able to get everything taken care of in the background, and now I'm kind of to the, I am to the point where I'm looking to get permitting reapplied for to rebuild the building. Finally, that process, that insurance process has gotten to that point, and I guess I have a kind of speech is what I was gonna say here, they pre-wrote down. It says, "I'm here today to express my concerns regarding a meeting that was called by the Planning and Community Development Director at my house this past week, involving both my contractor and myself." I said, "The meeting was framed as an investigation into what they perceived as a potential storage business being run out of my future garage that I am planning to rebuild. The meeting was called under questionable circumstances and appears to be a bit of an overreach." What comes down to it is that the current permitting requirements now, my old building had sixteen-foot sidewalls, right? I'm looking to just replace what I had, simply, right? Now, the current, if I was to rebuild now, there's, I was saying, I'm not within the hundred-and-eighty-day window to be able to be grandfathered into the old sidewall size, and now the largest I can go is fourteen feet. So, I guess, going from there, I was saying that I've been a lifelong citizen of Dayton, and I'm just disheartened to, as though, I feel like my intentions and actions as a homeowner are being scrutinized. The situation revolves around my request to rebuild the garage to the same size it was when it was lost, before it was lost, including these sixteen-foot sidewalls, and during the meeting, I was asked why I wanted the sixteen-foot sidewalls, and whether I was, it was because I was planning to run a storage business out of that garage. I explained that the reason I wanted the height was to be able to have the option to install a mezzanine, because then you'd have eight feet from each end, right? Or have a camper. If you have a camper inside there, then the air conditioner on top is generally, you can't fit it into the garage door with that shorter sidewall, generally, unless you tweak a few things. But just, so, within just a few minutes of starting our conversation, when they first arrived, I was, it was made clear that because the hundred-and-eighty-day window to rebuild had passed by the two months, I would need a variance in order to proceed with my project. I was also informed that the process for securing a variance would take at least two and a half months, because they have to go through the City Council. To make matters worse, I was then advised to apply for commercial zoning for my property in order to run the storage business that I had no intention of running out of that garage, right? If I was at that point, I would re, I would apply, but I'm not planning on running any storage business out of there, and I was also told that it was, it would be, it was suggested to do it now, when I apply for these taller sidewalls, because that would be easier to get the approval now than if I were caught later, right, running a business out of it, okay? I'm frustrated in that this, I could have been informed a week earlier or more over the phone, whatever, that I had expired that hundred-and-eighty days, and I have to start fresh again, right? But the reason we are outside of that hundred-and-eighty-day window is because of the prolonged insurance claim process, which was beyond my control. Additionally, the uncertainty surrounding material pricing makes it even more critical to begin the rebuild process as soon as possible. Prices are constantly fluctuating, as everybody knows, and every day I weigh, you know, it could be longer, materials could be higher, which complicates this process. I'm here tonight to request approval for that, it's literally a seventeen-inch variance, to go from the fourteen feet to the sixteen feet. From the height of my rough line of my house, right now, I can only make it a fourteen-foot sidewall. I'm just looking to rebuild what I had. I'm just looking for that variance so that we can get going right away. I don't want to keep, I don't want to keep waiting, especially when these delays are caused by factors that are outside of my control. I don't know. The entire interaction, I felt, was disingenuous and frankly unfair. The manner in which this meeting was initiated and the vice, advice that was given was not only inappropriate, but also seemed to be an attempt to pressure me into pursuing a commercial zoning application, which I never planned on. I believe the situation reflects, reflects a broader pattern of overreach, and I hope the City Council will reconsider how situations like this are handled moving forward, ensuring that citizens are treated fairly and respectfully. I'm just looking for, I want this daylighted, so you guys know, right? They're, they're assuming I'm gonna run up, the two that were out there assumed that I was gonna be running a business out of there, because I have some campers and some other trailers in the back of my property, right? So they think, because I want these taller sidewalls to be able to put these inside and charge for storage, which I'm not. I never did before. When this whole thing went down, when my garage burned, if I was, one, if anybody in there was paying me to store, my insurance company would have found it. I had to pull my social security number, I had to give to them, they went through all my bank accounts to make sure I was, nothing was being done, no business was being ran out of it, and there wasn't, and there isn't going to be in the future. If there is, for whatever reason, I will go back, I will apply, I will do the right thing, right? There's some campers out back that, if they're a problem, there's three of them, and there're people that are in the neighborhoods around me, like in the Sundance Woods neighborhoods, that have campers back that keep them at my place. They do. If that's a problem, which I was told that day, that if nobody complains about it, if my neighbors don't have issues, there, I don't, then there, there's nothing that can be, nothing that can be done, really, I guess. It's not a problem, basically. Nobody complains, it's not a problem. There's three campers back there, those, I've told those people now, at this point, go. They're gone. If this is gonna be a problem, they're gonna force me, if the city's gonna force me into getting commercially zoned, then it's not, it's not, this is not a business, I'm running, this is not a profit, for profit anything, right? Most of this money goes to charity, I take in fifty dollars per trailer, right? It goes to charity, it's part of an organization, so that's all it is. But I want that daylighted, and then I'm, I'm asking for some just variance approval.
So at open forum, we can't do that?
I get that, you said that right away.
But staff is clearly aware, so they will, they will look into it.
Yeah, it's, it's literally, if it wasn't for the insurance process, I would, I didn't know, even know how much money I had to rebuild with, right? I couldn't apply for something that I didn't know the size, and, you know, go into something that, with the unknowns.
So if, if you had been able to get through the insurance and the permitting process in that hundred-and-eighty-day window, your previous wall height would have been okay?
Yes, well, under my understanding, yes. If it was within the hundred-and-eighty days, then it would have been fine to rebuild at that size.
If I could clarify, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, basically, the way that the ordinance is written in the ag districts is that the accessory structure on the property can exceed the height of the principal home. This was a grandfathered-in, non-conforming building that had a hundred-and-eighty days to pull a permit or file for a new building permit application, that would have allowed the property owner to rebuild the structure to its, or previous size and height. But based on the non-conformity section of the zoning ordinance, it is that hundred-and-eighty-day limitation. And if I could clarify just one other thing, we weren't requesting that he apply for commercial zoning or getting rezoned to commercial on this ag property. It was more of a, if you're going to apply for a variance for this structure to exceed the height of the house, at the same time, it'd be beneficial if you were gonna continue storing other people's items on the property to go through that interim use permit process, so it wouldn't have to go through it two separate times.
Business permit.
Yeah, home extended business.
Home extended business.
But it was implied.
Okay, all right.
That's, I'm just looking, if, at, at the least, it's some common sense, right? Like, if I, obviously, I'm going forward with wanting that height if I can possibly get it, right? And to do, to go through the two meetings and the two and a half months later, to me, just, it's not common sense, like, rebuilding would have happened. If I could have done it earlier, I would have done it. And I get you gotta have rules and laws and all that stuff, but in this situation, it seems a little bit, like, this should be a no-brainer, to just go ahead, if possible, right?
Okay.
And approve it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else, open forum? Any online?
Sorry, Mayor, I'm not used to running the-
Yeah, we're just, Amy's off, huh? Oh, that's right.
Yeah, if anybody's online that would like to speak at open forum, please use the raise-your-hand function. I am not seeing any mayor.
Okay. We will move on, and staff consult, council updates, Zach?
Yep, Mayor, Members of Council, I got a few updates for tonight. Tonight is the rough timeline that was given by City Council on Thurvers Park District at last week's meeting to address questions on the Mississippi Trail. Did any of you have any questions that you had for staff or Thurvers Park District? If you have any of those, can you please send them over to us, so we can try to get them off? That would be greatly appreciated. Reminder that tomorrow is the open house, which will be at Public Works Facility out of Zanzibar. I would like to close City Hall at four, so we're able to help out and get everything situated over there. Is council okay with us closing it for the doors here at City Hall?
I'm okay with that.
Okay, just wanna make sure. And then, porta-potties continue to be a hot topic, but I am across my desk, not sure about your emails, but Marty done visited the sites two weeks ago or more, maybe, I don't know, looked at locations for moving them, we did move a couple of them, just small amounts. We're still hearing from residents that they would like them to be removed. I'm just confirming that the council would like to keep them where they are, or keep them in the parks.
I've had people reach out and thank me that they're there, so I think, I think the answer is screening.
I think the problem's-
The screening will be done, so that, that is going to be something that Marty and I worked on, he's already got his guy, and I bet I'm aware of, so. I just want to confirm, before we start putting in screening and stuff, that we are not going down the wrong path, so. Okay? Sounds great.
I think so.
Thank you. Gary?
Mayor and council have a couple of updates. Well, for rehab, the well is back in production now, just in time for the irrigation season. Just a quick note on the water usage, yesterday, we pumped one point, one and a half million gallons, one million five-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand gallons. Last year, on the peak consumption day, which was July 19th, we pumped one million two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand gallons, so we're already way ahead-
We blew that away.
Huh?
We blew that away.
Yeah, we blew that one right out of the water. In March this year, we pumped two-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand gallons. So, that's the average for March. So, we are pumping an extra one million two-hundred-and-fourty-four thousand gallons that appears to just be on irrigation. So, I would like to put out the odd even signs at this time, just because we're getting hit pretty hard here, so. So, well, five is currently scheduled for startup on Thursday, so we'll have that ready to roll, but we'll still be waiting for the wellhead treatment plant to be completed before we can actually put that into production. Wellhead treatment, masonry, we're waiting for the face, face brick to come to the site for the exterior walls. Roof decking is just about complete, next week will be more roofing, soffit work and some tidying, tightening up on there, and prep work for the masons before installing the face brick once it arrives. Parks, the bridge construction at Elsie Stevens is complete. Irrigation of parks, irrigation installation is gonna start this week on two parks that already have power to them, which is Elsie Stevens and Sundance, Sundance Woods. Leathers Park, the ground prep for the prairie stuff has been completed, and they've sprayed it again, they're letting it sand a little bit, so we get the, get a pre-emerge stab, make sure that's worked, and then hopefully, the weather will cool a bit, and we can start seeding that, that thing down in the neck, hopefully, early next week. And then, just a little bit on the enclosures for the porta-potties, we've worked through several different configurations and designs and materials. We finally figured out something that's, you know, not as cheap as we were expecting it to be, but I think it's worth doing the job properly. We're getting the stuff, we'll be doing the Sundance one first, that, hopefully, we can get started on Thursday and Friday this week and complete next week, so that'll be the first one, and that seems to be-
What is not as cheap?
Well, we were hoping it was gonna be a couple of hundred bucks, this is gonna be more like six hundred bucks, because we're doing a bigger structure to conceal more of the, of the porta-potty, and so you can only see it from one side, so it'll be a structure- side, so it'll be a structure that goes around to three sides and then extends to the front and across. So it's got four walls, but it's got an extension across the front, so it's, it's not, you can't see it all from, all four sides.
How big are, how big are the dimensions?
Uh, it's a handicapped, um, thing. I don't have the exact dimensions on me.
Probably five by ten?
Yeah.
And that's six center bucks.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't, still seems like we need them.
I think we need them.
Chief?
Mayor, members of council, last Thursday, we conducted our physical agility test. We had six participants, all six passed, uh, so we'll be looking to interview them starting next Thursday.
Chief?
Evening, Mayor, members of council. Couple of years ago, I had the goal of getting all my full-time police officers through crisis intervention, intervention training. Um, we have all our full-time employees except one who was under probation, so, um, they have all completed the crisis, forty-hour crisis intervention training. Um, we also have added two negotiators, um, with the two that we currently have, so we have four total negotiators within the department. All, um, of the PD participated in an eight-hour firearms training the other day. Um, this was not a qualifying, but it's one of the four, um, firearms trainings that we are putting on per year now. So that went good, and everything's going good.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just one update for you. The planning commission had a good discussion on exterior lighting, uh, for the zoning ordinance. Uh, they ultimately ended up tabling the decision or recommendation for the city council, so that'll go back to them in June, and hopefully we'll have another good discussion and wrap that up for you guys to take a look at.
James?
Uh, no, I think so.
Amy?
Scott?
Yeah, I got one little item to bring up to, uh, the entire city's attention.
Everybody?
Everybody. I challenge anybody in this city to be able to dunk me tomorrow.
Does that mean I don't have to do it?
No, no. I'm just giving you a little, I don't want you to wrinkle up.
That's it?
That's it, that's all I got. That's pretty exciting news.
It's very exciting news. I am not putting myself on the dunk take, sorry. Um, I don't have anything.
I have nothing.
Um, well, first on that topic, I forgot to send you my name, but I'm more than happy to get dunked.
I will add you to the list.
So that's two, you still need a third?
Oh, yeah.
I'm out of this.
Great. Um, the other thing, just to make you aware, I will not be at the June tenth meeting. June will be somewhere in Norway, I think.
You will? That's the goal?
Not the bottom of the ocean.
Fingers crossed.
That's all I got.
Nothing from me.
Okay, um, we are on, now we're on to new business. Item N, audit.
Members of council, we have Janelle from Burke TV here to give the audit presentation. Go on up.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I've got the summary of your 2024 audit for you tonight. We'll go through the, the reports that we issue as part of the audit process. The first one being the independent auditor's report. This report does talk about management having responsibility over the financial statements as well as the internal controls over financial reporting. As the auditor, we're responsible to express an opinion based on the results of our testing. We did issue an unmodified opinion. This, again, is what's considered the clean opinion or the best that we can offer you. It states that your financial statements present fairly in all material respects. The next reports that we issue is a report in accordance with government auditing standards. These standards require us to look at internal controls over financial reporting as well as compliance with various laws, regulations, contracts, and grants. When it comes to the internal controls, we had one item to report, and you've seen this in the past, it's the lack of segregation of accounting duties. Um, just due to the limited staff that you have within the finance area, there are some duties that are overlapping, very common for entities your size to have this finding. And then when it comes to compliance, we had no instances of non-compliance to report. And then the last report we issue is our report on Minnesota legal compliance. The state auditor's office gives us a list of state statutes to test compliance with each year, um, and we had no instances of non-compliance, so another clean report for the city. And then moving on, we've got some, um, charts and graphs that show some, some trends for the city over the last five years. Um, the first one here is your property tax levy and tax capacity. For 2024, your tax capacity increased about twenty-six and a half percent. Um, you are up about a hundred and forty-two thou, or a hundred and forty-two percent since 2020, the first year presented here. Um, in the related timeframes, your levy increased about nineteen percent in 2024, um, up about fifty-one percent since 2020. And so overall, your tax rate has been decreasing in the years presented here as your, your tax capacity has been increasing at a much higher rate than what your levy has been increasing. This next graph shows the general fund revenues, expenditures, and fund balance for the last five years. Um, revenues did exceed expenditures in four of the five years presented here. Um, you have been growing your fund balance in each of the years presented. For 2024, your fund balance increased, uh, four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. So that's about forty percent, or five months' worth of expenditures. Um, it's up slightly from the prior year and right in line with the state auditor's recommendation of having thirty-five to fifty percent, um, in your fund balance. The next graph here summarizes general fund, um, sources of revenue for the last five years. Um, overall, revenues were up about one point nine million dollars, or thirty percent, in 2024. Um, you did have an increase in the, the taxes that were allocated to the general fund, and you also saw some increases in charges for services and license and permits with the building activity that was going on during the year. Um, and you can see just kind of the overall trends of the, um, the dollars going up as your city continues to grow. Similar trend in the next graph, the expenditures for the general fund, um, additional activity with the growth that your city has seen in the last years. Um, so 2024, your expenditures increased about ten point eight percent, or seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. Um, and you did see increases in, in most of the categories. Um, public safety, you saw, um, increases with the addition of officers and the, the assistant fire chief. General government increased with additional staff in there as well, and changes in the, um, salaries. And then public works, the largest variance in that area was the increase in the contract price for the recycling. The table here summarizes general fund budget to actual results. So the first column is the budgeted numbers that you, as the council, approved, um, kind of approved a balanced budget or no change in the overall fund balance, and as I mentioned, you had an increase of about four hundred and forty-three thousand. Um, the largest variance in that was due to your revenues being about four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars higher than budgeted. Um, some of the, the larger variances in there, again, are the, the licenses, permits, and charges for services. Um, you've historically budgeted conservatively for those areas. Um, in the intergovernmental revenues, you see, you, um, collected additional revenues that weren't budgeted for, and then also the miscellaneous revenues. You did receive a large payment from Maple Grove for some connection charges. On the expenditure side, you were within forty-five thousand dollars of what you had budgeted. Some, um, plus and minus variances across the categories, but overall within point six percent of the budgeted numbers. The next graph here is the water fund activity for the last five years. Um, this fund also continues to see increases in activity as you add users to the system. Um, for 2024, you did have an operating income of about three hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. This is the third year that you've had an operating income in this fund. You can see 2022 was the first year where you, um, had that operating income, and it has continued to grow the last couple of years. And then the last graph here is the sewer fund. Um, this fund also has been having the increase in activity with the new users. Um, however, this fund is experiencing an operating loss, five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for 2024, um, and that includes depreciation. If you don't include the depreciation, you do have an operating income of about a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. So overall, you are covering approximately twenty-five percent of the depreciation, and that's allowing you to set money aside for future repairs and replacements, um, when needed. So that's kind of the purpose of those depreciation dollars, so.
And was, was, uh, so we talked about this a little last year, that depreciation is kind of at an accelerated scale, right?
It's our, yeah. Cities have the best guess of how long it's going to last, that item. Now, is our best guess close? Probably, but it's probably conservative. As in, we expect it to only last thirty years for most things, or they probably last fifty.
Yeah.
At least things nowadays, but.
So even if we backed that schedule down to say, say half of what it is, would we still be negative? What, what's going on here?
Well, what is the issue for it?
Yeah.
Um, we don't have any large purchases that we're really trying to bank up dollars for. That's really what's happening in the water fund, and why you're seeing some dollars being added to the bottom line is because we have so many large items to pay for. Water towers, wells, water treatment plants, or in the sewer fund, we don't have that stuff.
And this really is depreciation.
So, it's really just depreciation, so, um, as long as we're, you know, staying consistent with dollars and able to have money in the fund, I think that's important. But the idea is that if we're, you know, if you say we have to contribute every asset and have everyone on the books, we're gonna have to have a large increase in the sewer fund, and we don't have any large purchases to offset those items, we're just gonna hold onto the money for a conservative amount of time.
Sixty years, seventy years, right?
Got it. So that's been my prerogative with it, is be appropriate, not aggressive.
Right.
But we feel like our charges for sewer use are in line?
They're relatively in line. We may have to do some changes this year in 2026, in the future budget year, to take a look at them and such, uh, mostly because we do that seasonal usage average, and it's very difficult to do seasonal usage average when we do, um, sewer, because people use different sewer amounts based on the time of year, and so it's, you know, we, we physically pay, um, the amount that actually goes out, but we charge for an average amount based on what they have in their first two months of usage, so.
But ultimately, most of these dollars are kind of a pass-through to the Met Council for.
A lot of them are. Um, this year, our budget's about six hundred and nineteen grand that goes to the Met Council for, from the city here, so. That's part of it, that's a pass-through. The rest is stated, that stays here. Hopefully, I addressed your question?
Yes, thank you. I'm not here to solve it, I guess we're just trying to understand the numbers to him.
Yep.
So that's all I had for you guys tonight. Um, certainly open to any additional questions you might have.
One question that I wanted to make sure Janelle addressed was the significant risks that were on that communications letter. Um, there was identified risks in that communications letter that just were very eye-opening to myself this year, and so I'm, that may be touch base on that, Janelle would be great.
Yeah. So within the communication letter, there was a section labeled significant risks, and with every audit we perform, we have to identify significant risks. So it doesn't mean that we see any issues going on within the city, it's, um, things that we develop tests around. We always have to develop tests, and, um, certain ones, let me open this up here real quick. There's a few of them in here, um, like the revenue recognition, misappropriation of assets, management override. Those are risks that we have to consider in every audit that we do. So it, it sounds alarming just by the, the headings and its required verbiage that we have to use, um, but just wanted to clarify that it's, it's just, um, tests that we have to identify for every audit, so nothing going on. If we had concerns, you'd see more findings within the reports and such like that. It's, um, kind of more, there's the standard terminology that we have to use.
And this relates to the division of duties in finance that you mentioned earlier?
Um, not necessarily. It's, it's on page five of the communication letter, so with every audit, we have to identify risks and develop different tests around that. So we'll look at what are the largest revenue streams that the city has, and then we develop tests around that. You know, we look at the property tax revenues coming in, your utility revenues that are coming in, special assessments, so it's different areas that, where we develop different audit tests.
These are risks identified, not.
These are risks identified, not... We're back. Item K, okay. So item K, we tabled last time, so we will have a vote, have a vote to untable it.
Yeah, Mayor, we don't necessarily need a vote, but we do need to get clear direction. That's what we're needed for. So it doesn't need to be necessarily a vote unless there is something that you want us to do, but necessarily just need direction. And being, it was tabled, that was our direction was to bring it back.
I'm confused.
Do you, do you mean a vote to pull it from the table?
To pull it from the table.
Yes, you can vote procedurally to pull it from the table for discussion.
So I need a, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
So that's, um, and there's no discussion. All those in favor say aye. Right.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Okay. So easement discussion on Lawndale. Do you have something to say? You look like you're ready to...
I'm just, I'm just ready. I'm here if you have questions. I mean, there was some question at the last meeting about whether the council could meet in closed session on the item to have confidential legal advice from me. And the answer to that question is no. This doesn't fall under an exception to the open meeting law. I did provide the council with a confidential memo. I didn't receive questions or comments from all of you, just from a couple of you. So if there are additional questions that I can answer about the easement document itself, the record that, such as it is, that the count that the city has as to how the easement was created, and any other questions that the council might have, I'm, I'm here to try to answer as best I can.
So the issue is, we can choose to leave things as, as is, or, or not. That's really it.
Yes.
Um, so I guess, does anybody have any, any comments they want to make? At this point? Go ahead, Sharon.
I think where I'm struggling is that the easement, in some ways, is for a road. But there isn't a road, there's a driveway.
No. The easement is for a road.
Yes.
And what was constructed there was constructed to the width that was, the minimum width that was recited in the easement document itself. So it is considered a road under the terms of the easement that was granted to the city for a roadway. It was not granted for a driveway. It was not granted for access. It was granted for a roadway. So it is technically a roadway easement.
Okay, so I guess, can I just ask? I'm just gonna ask the question. Um, is it possible for the city to tell the, one of the part, one of the grant, because there's the grantors and the grantees?
Correct. The city is the grantee.
Yes.
The grantor, there's a single grantor under the, under the easement document. The way that it was written, it has both of the owners at the time were created as one single grantor.
Can we, as a city, in any way, shape, or form, separate those grantors?
Not in the way that the, that the easement is drafted.
Okay. So that's one of my questions. Second question. Can we then declare to the grantors that we would like them to build a second 12-foot road on a, a specific portion of the easement?
That's a difficult question to answer, because it doesn't, the, the easement doesn't address that.
Okay.
So the, the language in the easement speaks to a 12-foot, bituminous surface with two feet of, on either side of gravel for drainage and such. But it is described as the improvement shall include, but not be limited to. So it does appear to contemplate a wider surface potentially. But it doesn't talk about the location of where the surface would be constructed. Is it in, is it one sur, I mean, it refers to one surface. So, I mean, I think the most reasonable reading is that it could not be two driveways. But again, it's not, it doesn't specifically preclude that. So it's, 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 um, it's a difficult document to work with in some ways because of that kind of ambiguity.
Okay. So if, which we don't know yet, but if we were able to, say, build a second 12-foot roadway, that's not a driveway, can we, and it's one grantor, can we specif, we can't break them apart and say, one of the grant, like, how do we specify? Can, can we indicate who has to pay for that? Can we have any saying who pays for it? Or it's just we send the bill to the grantors and leave it to them to figure out who pays for it?
Um, a couple of things there, councilmember. I don't know that this, the city would not send a bill.
Okay.
This would be the private construction by the grantor.
Okay.
Um, and how they work that out amongst themselves is, is not specifically for the city to control.
Okay.
The only way that the city would be involved with any construction or maintenance is if there was a failure by the grantor to maintain, at this point, maintain, or perhaps construct the improvements contemplated by the easement. And at that point, if the city were involved, then there would be a bill. But right off the top, the city is not involved. This is basically a private agreement between the two grant, the two parties that consists, that, that the grantor consists of, if that makes sense.
None of it does. But that's not your fault. The document doesn't make sense.
The way that I'm explaining it makes sense, sorry.
The way you make, the way you're explaining the nonsensical document makes sense. The document is where the nonsensical part is.
It is a little challenging, yes.
Under the current easement, is there any ability for the city to require that that roadway be rebuilt and centered in the easement?
Councilmember, the, the document doesn't specify the location of where the surface would be placed, whether it would be in the 30 feet that's on the south side of the, the underlying property line, or on the north side of the underlying property line, or in the center of the full 60, 60 feet of the easement. So it's, the easement does not specify the location of where any improvement would be placed.
And we don't have any, outside of the easement, I mean, because this is a public roadway, that other rules would apply. Maybe this is more adjacent question, but when we build a road, don't we generally center it on the, in the right way?
Yes.
And is that a requirement of us or the county? It's just our practice?
Uh, just practice. It's not necessarily a requirement. It could be offset if you had more utilities on one side, for example, or others. But it's, it's generally done so to provide additional space on either side of the road for utilities.
But it's not prescribed to us in any way?
No, no.
This, under the easement, the city, the, the only requirement is that the, that the, whatever is constructed meets the city standard. So whether it's a codified standard that's in the city code, or if it's a practice, as the city engineer just described, that's about as much guidance as the easement document gives.
Any other questions? So if nobody has any other questions?
I don't know if I have any other questions. I guess I'm trying to understand this thing 100% correctly.
Oh, good luck with it.
Well, no, I get it. I mean, I understand it. I, I think what the deal is. We don't, do we have the Quillings here? I think what the deal is, we have one driveway. There is going, and I personally don't like to see a shared driveway, because if somebody's coming and somebody's going, somebody's got to back up. And a solution to that, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna tell it like it is. A solution to that is a, is a 24-foot roadway. Can everybody live with that? The other issue that I see here is, and I guess it's a good thing my dad never did it to me, but a, 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 an agreement was put down 20-some years ago, and now all of a sudden, it's not working because the kids don't want it to work. Correct?
No.
Uh, councilmember, I don't, I don't know the, the interpersonal dynamics of it. But I can say that in, since your last meeting, I did have a conversation with, with Mr. Duke and with Mr. Bennett, who were the original owners of the property at the time that the agreement was, was, or the easement was drafted. And it was my understanding, and I admit I can't remember if it was when I was talking with Mr. Duke or Mr. Bennett, but one of them indicated to me, and this is not in the record, it's not in the resolution or any of the findings that the council made at the time. It's not in the, in the easement document itself. But there was some indication that there was, and an, an expectation that at some point, property to the west of these two parcels, or even including these two parcels, the parcel that was, is kind of L-shaped that was owned by Mr. Bennett at the, or the Bennetts at the time, and are now owned by the...
Quillings.
Jacobsons.
Jacobsons.
I was gonna say Petersons, but it's Jacobsons. That part, that there would be some subdivision of those parcels as well in the future, which of course, obviously hasn't happened. And that at the ti, and the expectation was that if that happened, that the roadway within the easement that was granted, the driveway to the parcel to the north that's now owned by the Jacobsons, and the two Duke parcels would each have a driveway coming off of a roadway there. Not that, and they would be addressed off of a new roadway, not addressed off of Lawndale. Why that's not in the record, why that's not in the easement, I don't know. But that was just kind of anecdotal information that I, that I kind of, that, that, you know, one party remembered from 20 years ago.
There's vague reference to that.
There is.
About addressing.
Correct.
So there is, oh, but it's vague. It's not...
But it doesn't specify the idea that the driveways would come off of the new road in the easement area. So that's the, the 20-plus-year-old memory of, of someone, you know, one person in the, in the full picture that just, for what it's worth, I, I have that information.
And we don't, Jason, we don't have any sort of guidelines that say you, you, you take your driveway off of the lesser road?
No, I mean, general practice would be to limit connections to larger roads. But no, there's nothing specifically excluding or requiring.
But there is a requirement in the subdivision code that driveways have to come off of a public street, which is why this public street area in the easement was created. And, and that they wouldn't, that you, that the access couldn't be over that private easement, over a private easement that could have, you know, been just for a driveway from, you know, the, the westerly parcel that's now owned by Jason Duke. And, and so it's just, because of the way that the code was written then and the way that the code currently exists, there can't be a driveway off of an easement. It has to be off of a street.
But now that it's a street?
Correct.
That's why I was asking, Jason, if, if that meant that, you know, those three driveways would have to, well, actually two.
Be reoriented.
Right.
Correct. But it, as, as it exists, that hasn't been put into practice.
And this easement is the only access to that back 20 acres, correct? I don't believe that, but...
Yeah.
As I understand it, yes, because the, to get to the 20 acres that are, that would be landlocked, that are owned by Mr. Quilling, by TQ, by TQ Farms, they, they have an easement over the Jacobson's parcel that aligns with the street easement. So that connection over the, the Jacobson parcel to the 20 acres owned by TQ Farms, that's how they get their street frontage onto the street, onto the, the easement, the roadway easement that, as it exists on paper.
Is he good?
Mark confused now.
Are you confused now?
That's confusing.
What Jamie just said.
There's, there's, there was a shared...
It's a shared easement.
A private easement to this public easement.
Correct.
Correct. That's, that's a good description.
Well, the simple solution on this is to put a 24-foot roadway in there so that somebody coming and going, they can both fit. Who pays for it? It's up to them.
Yeah, but I don't know that we can, they've met the requirement for the...
They met the minimum requirement.
For the minimum requirement for the easement document.
Yes.
So I don't know that we can, I don't know. I don't, I don't know that we can adjust that.
We are the grantee. So I think we can adjust it, but we, we can't ever adjust a minimum, yes.
Well, it sounds like the original intent was that this could be a road into a subdivision in the future. But, and that's not documented, but that's...
That it was contemplated that that was possible, that I understand it.
That's the hinting in there. And that's not what's happening, which also leaves things fuzzy.
I, I don't know if it leaves it fuzzy. I mean, I think that the, the intent was to have, to, to, to use this easement area as a roadway for multiple parcels potentially. What that looked like, whether it was the, the two or three that it is now, or, you know, whatever it might be sub, you know, the, any of the other land that might be subdivided in the future. I mean, obviously, you can't contemplate every future possibility. But it was, it, it was at least contemplated, perhaps, at the time. That's very, that's very fuzzy, to use your word.
Okay. So at this point, this is a discussion.
City staff just needs direction from council.
So we either leave it lie as it is, or, or not.
Well, I mean, I think specifically in the, in the, in the agenda item, I think there's a, the possibility of discussing a vacation of the easement, which would kind of remove the city from the, from having an ownership interest in the easement. But I don't think that truly solves the problem of who gets access from where and how do they, how are they code compliant with the street frontage requirement and the no private easements for driveways requirement in the subdivision code? So it's, you know, I mean, short of, of the, the current owners and the city doing some sort of reformation of the easement and kind of reaching a new agreement on what the easement would be, I, I can't say that there's, that there are very many options for the city other than to have everybody live with what it says on the, on the document that's been recorded with the county for 20 years and, and try to work out a way to make it work.
Is there, I mean, to me, it sounds like what we need to do is sit down with all three parties, the city and the affected parcels, let's say, and redo the easement. three parties, the city and the affected parcels, let's say, and redo the easement.
If, if the parties were willing, I mean, it's, it could be worth the discussion, yes.
Well, then, according to that map, there's only 60 feet of street frontage for the, there's not enough street frontage for the 20-acre parcel, correct?
That wasn't a requirement back then.
It wasn't...
When it was broke off, when it was split off.
I see.
That's the kink. And apparently those requirements are only on property, property splits.
Correct.
As I understand it, yes.
That is correct.
And, and also from the resolution approving the easement, and, and there's a, a couple of variances granted at the same time that the easement was, was created, there, the information in that resolution indicates that the two parcels that were originally purchased by Randy Duke were already split as far back as the 1970s, so long before Mr. Duke came into ownership of those parcels. So, how they were split, I, I don't, I don't have any information about that.
How would we go about all coming together and renegotiating the easement? How does that process work?
Oh, we would make a recommendation to staff, and they would attempt it.
That's right.
I do say attempt.
Oh yeah, I'm not saying it's gonna, but like, that would be my, my direction to staff would be to do that personally.
Okay. Any more discussion?
If that, if that doesn't work, do you want to have a next step settled out, or you wanted to say, yep, that's what we're doing now, and come back to you when we have a result?
I mean, I, it...
By with either, I just want to make sure you clear direction.
Yeah, it sounds like for me, from what I'm hearing from everything, is either we renegotiate it, or we leave it as is, from the city's perspective, like, those are our two, like, that seems to be what it sounds like to me, that...
That's the way I read it too, and I think it's, you know, unfortunately, it's a, this is playing out in a way that the two original grantors didn't envision, and, you know, I feel like to a large degree, we're kind of stuck with what it is, and I think the idea of trying to, trying to get the parties and the city to renegotiate is, you know, is the best we can do, and I think we should do that.
If only just to have some clarity about, you know, the rights that, that the underlying owners have relative to each other, because I think that's where the easement really isn't, is, is the least clear, is that it doesn't really talk about how they interact with each other, from a legal perspective.
Ah, sure.
Maybe we can solve it now.
Jason asked me to come, so I wanted to make it work. So, Will Tansey, I'm an attorney with Jason, for Jason, for TQ Farms, and Adam...
Jude.
Jude. He's, he's an excavator contractor. So I just wanted to talk about the two driveway solution, it's really going to be difficult because there's a hill on one side, there's utilities already on one side, and I know there's a question about whether the utilities had a permit, but, and then, and then two, two of them are going to be, you know, 12 feet plus two more on each side is 16 feet, you know, it, it's getting pretty, pretty big and pretty expensive. So, Quilling's idea is just to share the driveway that's there, and I don't think it, I, I think it's the same intent as what everybody thought at the time, it's just that instead of having a road with a subdivision worth of people, the Dukes are just sharing with one additional house, and Quilling's, Quilling's prepared to pay for the road up to the street if, if it can be done as a gravel, or he can leave the pavement in and just connect to it, he's gonna put a privacy fence in. It's not going to be, you know, high-traffic area, I don't, I mean, obviously somebody might have to back up once in a while, but I don't think it's going to be a high-traffic area.
A privacy fence where?
Uh, right, right at the end of the easement.
On the property line?
On the property line.
Oh, okay.
So, so we just, you know, he, when he bought it, he really, you know, he relied on that, his lender relied on that, it's the only way to, you know, you've got that landlocked parcel that he owns now, and it's just the most direct way out to a street, and then if you put, if you put two of them there, you end up with three driveways coming together at Lawndale, like, really tightly together, it'd be really, it'd be a mess. So, you know, we're, we're trying to, Jason wants to find a solution, and so I'm sure he'll be open to, to talking about it, as you guys are suggesting, the, you know, the, the problem is obviously that the timing keeps dragging on and on, and I, I thought there had been a permit application made, and I didn't realize that hadn't been, been put forth, so, if, if, if that's the route to go, I'm sure he'll support it, we'd like to get it, get it done on a somewhat...
Okay.
...quicker pace. So yeah, I just wanted to hit the highlights, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Um, just for moral support? Anything you guys want to add?
Nope.
So the, the privacy fence would be going north and south on the west boundary, correct?
Correct.
So basically, the privacy fence is just going to shield you from the Duke, from the Dukes, is what you're saying? Kind of, sort of, but they're up pretty high, so they're going to see right over it anyway. So the privacy fence is useless.
Well, it might, it might limit traffic in and out, because people won't think there's a drive-through or anything, I, I don't, I don't know, but...
Sure.
More or less, just a buffer divider anyway.
Whatever, call it what you want.
Anything else?
No, I, I mean, I, I think, I think that's the main stuff we wanted to touch on, and we're, we're glad to hear you're open to talking about it, because we'd like to get it going.
Thank you. Did you guys want to come up, or are you... Okay. Been up enough times, but go ahead.
Just try to do your best, stand for the mic if we can, that's, that's all I ask. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members and staff, my name's Joanna Duke, I reside at 14661 Lawndale Lane. This is Jason Duke, he's my husband, and Randy Duke, the property owner at 14651. I want to speak clearly tonight about the deeply unfair burdens this easement is proposed, use has created for me, and for my neighbors, and for the city. In 2004, we were denied the option of using a private access agreement between our property, oh, sorry, our property and my father-in-law's. The city required a broader easement recorded publicly and involving the neighboring Bennett property, now owned by the Jacobsons. My family honored that request, built the access, and has maintained it fully for 20 years, no city maintenance, no contributions from other easement holders, and now the Quillings, through a private access agreement with the Jacobsons, want to do the very thing we weren't allowed to do. They want to use a private path to reach their land, and they're trying to claim access through a driveway, a driveway they haven't paid for, maintained, or respected. And let's be honest, the situation is inappropriate, asking multiple property owners to fund and absorb the wear and tear of what amounts to a private driveway for the Quillings, and worse, to enable construction access for a developer with a long history of rule violations and disregard for city oversight, from unpermitted installations to repeated construction hour violations, they have shown a pattern of behavior that should not be rewarded with public accommodation. Both the Jacobsons and Quillings have frequent commercial traffic to their properties, for our exceeding normal residential use, and these daily movements combined with construction traffic create serious safety risks. My children use this shared easement as their only way to leave our home and access their bus stop. This is not a matter of equity, it's a matter of safety. I respectfully ask the city to consider dissolving this even and restoring access to only the parties it's intended for. If the Quillings and Jacobsons wish to develop or access their land, they should be held to the same standards the city once imposed on us, not granting special access at the expense of everyone else. I don't, don't allow this to become a precedent, precedent where private development is enabled by public burden. Please uphold fairness, uphold the spirit of the original agreement, and protect your residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I have, to answer your question, how, how that property was split, my wife went down and spent almost a week at Hennepin County. Prior to the timeframe that it was done, Hennepin County, you had to apply to Hennepin County, not the city of Dayton, and they had one year to deny or approve it. If they didn't do anything, it was granted, that's how those two lots were split, I had nothing to do with it.
No, I understand that it was before your ownership, I just, it's a piece of the puzzle I didn't have.
Yeah. But I was told by the city of Dayton that I, I never should have split that, and that was the reason they, it took me three years to get a variance to build on a separate piece of property. And the city council in the past wasn't treated, I wasn't treated very good by them, but it was none of you people, I'm, you're respecting us, listening to us, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I add one? I'd just like to make note that, that, I don't know, no one really ever specified, but there, there is a public easement, what is it, a, a private easement was granted through Quillings and Jacobsons right now by the city, was that...
There's, it is, there's a private easement that, that is, that kind of aligns with where the public easement is on the Jacobson's parcel, that's a completely private agreement, it's not anything that the city's a part of, it's a private easement, but it aligns with to, to the, to the public easement, so that there's a connection there for the, for a street connection, or a spot for a street connection.
Is it fair to, to state that they are being granted something very different than what we were allowed, and that they aren't being forced into a public roadway that reaches all the way to their driveway, like, where we were being asked to do?
I, I don't know exactly...
We don't touch private easements, do we?
Yeah, I mean, the city's not involved in a, in the private easement part of it.
Right, but we weren't allowed to get a private easement between us and our father, we were forced into this situation with the city, and that's what I wanted to highlight is, they're getting the, the thing that we asked for, which was just a private easement, and we got stuck with whatever this easement agreement is with the city.
Well, the, the private easement that they, that they made is to connect to the public easement.
But it's not for a house, it's not for a structure.
I think what she's referring to is, I'm guessing a building permit was denied on that second, on that, on your property, unless there was an easement granted?
That L shape is one property, and right now, the private agreement crosses that L, and there's a road that goes all the way out.
Yep.
It's a fresh road, which is...
It's a fresh road, which was just paved like last week.
Yeah. But as far as what you're talking about, I'm, I'm guessing that you couldn't get that building permit until you got an easement, a public easement through though? That's what she's getting at.
Right.
She wanted a private easement, are they?
I mean, theoretically, it could have worked if the code had been written differently for Randy Duke to grant a driveway easement over the, the parcel that fronts onto Lawndale to the, to the parcel to the west. But the code, the code wouldn't allow that at the time, and, and the code is still written that way, that it has, that access can't be across a private easement, that it has to be street frontage, and so the, the 60 feet was created, or the easement that is 60 feet wide, but only contains the 12-foot surface right now, was created as a roadway, not as a driveway easement, so...
Yes, and then, but now we're allowing Quillings to do...
Technically...
They haven't asked, the building permit has not been approved yet, that would be where this would become a sticking point there.
I, I think the question is that, that their private easement connects to, technically connects to a public roadway easement, so it is a little different than what you were, you would have maybe liked to have done.
Oh, because it wouldn't be an easement, you're trying to connect to a public street?
Technically, the, the easement as it's created, the 60 feet that was 30 feet from these, from your two parcels, and the 30 feet that came from the, what was the Bennett parcel at the time, that created a roadway. So even though the city never built a street, never opened it as a street, it is, it is technically a street. On paper.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Are we now okay to move on? You got here. Okay, item L.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, try to hurry through this thing so we can keep moving forward. General fund cash balances, nothing major to discuss here, typical process is that we have a use of dollars throughout the first half of the year until we get our tax settlement in the beginning of July, nothing major to discuss about, you know, inactivity or any issues we have right now, again, mostly consistent, as you can see, the green line is our current cash balance that we sit today. General fund income statement, so far, nothing majorly out of, out of, to, of concern, the only one I do have a little concern about, and that's an oversight myself during the budget process, is that we budgeted for $30,000 of credit card fees that I thought we'd collect and then pay out, and we aren't actually collecting any fees, so we won't see that revenue this year, it's actually collected by the credit card companies, based on the fact that we no longer absorb those fees, we have them passed on along to the residents. So if they do pay for anything, building permits, whatever they are, normally we were, we would then absorb those fees, now we're not, I put it in as a revenue, and that's my own fault during the budget process, so we will have to make that up somehow, some way, and I'm sure we'll be able to do it somewhere. And then the major things are just timing, a lot of them are, either we've paid for a lot of subscriptions, or, you know, payments throughout the first half, first quarter of the year for the whole year, or we haven't had something happen, parks, recycling, you know, we haven't a cleanup day yet, which isn't in here, it happened this recently, this past weekend, we haven't had park work get done by seasonals, those are coming along, and then, again, most of it's related to timing in Q1. Any major questions on the general fund overall?
I have a bunch of stupid questions, because I wasn't here through the budgeting process.
I love stupid questions.
So, we collect franchise fees.
Yes. They are not in this fund.
Like, what are fran, like, when I hear franchise fees, I think, I would like to start a McDonald's, and so I pay McDonald's a franchise fee, and no one's starting a franchise of Dayton somewhere.
So it is a, it is a small fee that's charged, I think it's $3 per resident, and it's very even.
You're talking about the...
You're talking about like...
You're not talking about cable, you're talking about utility.
Talking...
That's what that is?
It's, it's for...
On your utility bill.
Yeah, so utility bill, so if you have internet, is it on internet, it's on gas, it's on electricity, you pay $3 on your bill, and then that goes into the city's, technically pavement management fund, it goes into pavement management for roadways.
Okay, okay.
It's just another CAX, is what it is right now.
Okay. I was just curious, because like I said, when I hear franchise, like I said, I think of like, you know...
It is not a McDonald's, we are not running McDonald's here.
I need, well, yes, anyway, so that was my...
If we were, we'd make a lot more money.
And then, what falls under economic development? Like, what's all housed under that?
So, but, would, are you talking about the planning and economic development area?
Yeah.
So that's not the EDA, that's a totally separate fund.
I, yeah.
Planning and economic, economic development is essentially Hayden and John.
Okay.
And their work that they do each and every day, which of that's, whether that's planning work, whether that's just general salaries, supplies, they're going to conferences, whatever that may be.
Okay. I just, I knew it was different than EDAs, that's why I was...
Yes, it is not the EDA, that is a totally separate fund.
Got it, got it, got it. And then this one was already kind of talked about, the sewer being, looking like it...
Yes.
But that's normal, and we're okay with that, and we're not worried about that.
I'm not concerned about that at all, yeah.
And then, is leasing vehicles more cost-effective than buying them?
Yes.
Okay. And then, this is from a, someone who drives a small car, because small cars are cost-effective, even though I would love a truck, trucks are not cost-effective, and the police have a brand-new, beautiful, big truck that uses more gas than the car did. Is that, like, are we concerned about, like, increase in...
You're talking about the CSO's vehicle? So that was a, that was a Tahoe, so I don't think it used that much less gas on a truck.
Okay.
But the reason why the truck is used is because there's a lot of bikes and a lot of, I would say, animals that we typically pick up, and we have to transport those, and it's much easier to do that in a truck than it is to do it inside a vehicle.
Oh, trust me, as someone who's had to haul hay in my car, and hay once goes in your car, you never get hay back out of your car, um, so...
So that is the reason why it got moved to a truck, and it's very common, so you'll see those in other communities as well, the CSO vehicles, either it's a pickup truck, whatever, because again, we pick up those things, it's much easier to use.
Save money, because you're taking four trips to get it.
No, I, get other people to deliver it for me, but I had to bring some sample bales home, because I wasn't going to drop that cash if the girls weren't going to eat it, so...
Any other questions?
No, that was, those were it for my stupid questions, thank you.
Nope, those are great questions.
Take the pressure off.
Okay, cash balances by fund, nothing major.
Does anybody else have a question?
Oh yeah, sorry, sorry, I need to go back to general fund, go back.
Mine are maybe not as broad, but we, we're way off budget, again, on fines and forfeitures.
Yes.
And I think a lot of that was built around the patrol officer.
Yes.
And more ticket revenue.
Yep.
Whether that's a good thing or not is a different conversation, but we're, we're way off of that number for the second year.
We are doing more of that, I will say, than we have been before, it is lagged It is lagged behind though, so you won't see fines and forfeitures for an extra month afterwards. So if we started it in February or March, and let's say you started in February, the fines and forfeitures for February wouldn't come until March, and that's if they're paid right of way. If they're not, then they won't come till April, so March is one that would come in April. We are up quite a few incidents, and some of that is related to traffic control, and so the fines will continue to increase based on those. It is something more of a priority for us, now that we are getting more staffing, we are being able to prioritize traffic control specifically.
And that's. Yeah, interesting.
Fines.
Yeah, forfeitures, I'd like to have a discussion about that at some point.
Forfeitures are typically not in the, I don't, I'm going to be honest with you, I don't know why we call it fines and forfeitures, because there's no forfeitures in this fund, they're actually in a different, separate fund, because it's all based on what the state allows us to do, and we only get a certain percentage of it, so it's not like, and it has to wait for twelve years or something before it's considered a forfeiture, and it's not technically fines or forfeitures, it should just say fines.
Sure. Yeah, I just am going back to it because, you know, the addition of that, one of the positions in the police department was built around the idea that this one would be somewhat self-funding.
Yep.
And we're a long way from that right now.
We are moving in the right direction though, I will say that that is the, the main thing. We also are, we had two new officers last year, they were all brand-new, so being brand-new, you have to follow an officer around, so FTO program, field training officer, so you have to follow one of the, an officer around, so that basically it's like two officers while we're trying to train somebody. The idea for training those people though is then once they're out and running, then we can back off and we're good to go. So they also get hired at a lower rate, which is nice too, for us, temporarily.
My other question was around the EDA, is there a reason that's not included with the sort of budget and year-to-date, and how is it going, information for other departments?
Yeah, we don't pass a budget for the EDA, we most certainly can in the future, that was requested by the EDA this past year, and we said we don't need to pass a budget based on the fact that they have dollars. We can look at passing a budget, most certainly, and then that can be added into this.
I thought there was a budget, not so much related to revenue, but expenses.
That was not passed by the city council.
Do they generate a report, the EDA itself?
We tried to do one, once a quarter, for them, just to give them an update of where they're at for dollars. I think the last one was in January or February, I think it, it's been, maybe it's been a little longer than that, but I know we've had them before. It needs to be more consistent though, most certainly, so it should be something we send out monthly.
Kind of waiting for to get some results on there, because there has been no expenditures here, basically, I mean.
There must be some.
Legal fees.
Legal fees is on there.
Well, now, 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 all of a sudden, over to the course of the last six, eight months, maybe.
Yeah, it'd just be nice to see that number.
So if that's something the council would like to do this year for a budget for the EDA, or have the EDA propose a budget, I know that they did propose one, was it last year, I believe, and then the council said, no, we don't need a budget based on the fact that you don't have any dollars coming in, we don't need a budget, any dollars going out. But then, no budget was passed.
Well, this property purchase will probably, you know.
I'm sure.
Jigger that somewhere.
But yes, we most certainly can.
It seems like a gap to me that we should do.
Yep, that sounds good. Noted, and we'll make sure we take care of that during this year's budget process. Any other questions? Cash balances by fund, not a whole lot again to, you know, talk about here, general fund is, change over last year is based on our prior year's numbers, as you heard from the audit, we are up in cash and up in dollars overall, which is good. EDA reduction is based on the purchase of the land, up in the historic village area, they close on that in January. Three forty-two fund, that's slowly decreasing, we will continue to slowly decrease that, the, the goal is to then not have to supplement that with tax levy by the end of it, so slowly but surely we will reduce that dollar amount. Transfer out of Fund 415 for the closure of the Dayton Parkway interchange happened, that was, the transfer was approved in April by the council. Greco Tiff started last year, hopefully it's done in less than nine years, I don't anticipate it to last even close to nine years, but it was started last year. And then Fund 459, we got our final Ted I, or Ted P, or depending on how you ask, eighty-one Parkway intersection in Q1. That project should be finished up this year too, so you should, we should have closed that fund as well, and then we'll move those dollars.
For improvements in that intersection.
Yeah, so that was at that intersection of eighty-one and the Parkway, where we redid the intersection at that point, because it was supposed to go down to a narrow area and then back out to a Parkway, so we decided we're just going to redo it, that was paid by Tiff dollars from the Q's building and a few other buildings beside, behind that, and also paid for West Frontsec Road to be redone from the Parkway up to Greco's area, and then Greco did the rest, and was paid for by Tiff. Any questions overall? Water fund, we're very healthy in the water fund, everything seems to be going well. Hopefully we don't continue to pump one point five million gallons a day, that's a lot of water.
We're selling it.
We're selling it, but we're paying for it too, so.
Yeah, but.
Again, it is a money maker, that is good.
It's a money maker.
That is true.
At least for the equipment, so.
Equipment, that's true. Everything seems to be going well in the water fund, I don't have anything major to discuss, I mean, a lot of them are negative for expenditures, we just haven't had anything going on major, which is good, and we're up in revenues.
The wellhouses.
Yes.
That we, that we own.
Yes.
Are the utilities and maintenance and things, those are.
In here.
Those are sliced out.
Those are in here.
Metered separately.
Yes.
Accounted in these funds.
That is correct.
Cool.
So that's part of the utilities number there, you see in the expenditures, it's part of the utility, so that'll be like the gas, if there's any, sometimes, there's heat in those buildings, electricity running those lights and such, those are both paid for from the well, or water department. Sewer department overall, operating looks like it was last year, I mean, this one maybe we have to look at a little more this year versus water, we've kind of just let sewer go through, just because we don't have any major expenditures, and it has been something of a major focus, but I just got the numbers for Met Council for next year, and we have another hundred and nine thousand dollar increase in our proposed dollars or preliminary dollars for payment to Met Council, we cannot absorb another hundred and nine thousand dollars, so I'm trying to be cognizant of the residents overall as well, and obviously having giant increases is never fun, but maybe it's something we have to talk about, because I just got that email this week.
And what was?
Why is it going up?
That's based on usage.
Okay.
So they take last year's usage and say, what is that compared to the previous year? And then, based on number of residential increases as well, they take both of those in and say, well, your projection's going to be more, so now your increase went up. And we've had a hundred thousand dollar increases for the last two years, and then another hundred thousand next year is the plan, at least proposed.
When we bill it out to residents.
Yes.
Is it based on their own usage, or do we just average it out of everybody?
Nope, so we base it on their own usage, however, it's done in January and February of each year, so whatever usage is in January and February is your max usage for the whole year that you get billed bi-monthly. If you use less than that, you get, you pay less. So let's say you total, maybe you had ten thousand gallons you used in those two months, you would get charged ten thousand gallons of sewer on your March bill, which would be for January and February. If you then went to May, for your next two months, if you used eight, we'd only charge you for eight. If you used fourteen, we're going to charge you for ten.
Okay.
So it's an averaging number, and we use January and February, because typically that means there's no irrigation going on, and that's, you know, typically the time people, you know, maybe it's snowbirds or whatever else, that just seems to be the best time to use it. We can pick a different time, and I'm happy to do that, but pick November, December, typically people are having holidays.
Is it as simple as just putting on a spreadsheet? Those numbers are, does it really take a lot of time?
No, it's in the, it's in the system.
What I'm wondering is, is if we could kind of look at the data and see the January, February, does make sense, or doesn't?
We can look at that again this year, we've done it, in the past, we've done it two different ways, we've done an averaging period, so we did November, December, and then January, February, and the average of those two is the number. Otherwise, we've done January, February, and then March and April as the averaging, and then they average those two numbers out, and then, and then just January, February. We've heard complaints on every one of them, so pick one, and that's what we're going to do.
Yeah, the problem is, it's a hard thing, we don't measure sewers, sewers, so it's hard, it's hard to.
Yeah, we do not measure sewers, so it's, we've got to come up with some model that doesn't include irrigation, because otherwise.
Right.
Some communities, or other communities, have, some have two meters, so they'll have one for the outside spigots, and then one for your inside homes, so it's always about actual usage on your inside, and then the outside only gets charged irrigation. But in this community, we have set up, we're only at one meter, so there's only one way to do it.
And I gotta believe that's going to be hard, that'll be hard to go in some houses, just the way they wrote the.
We have to have plumbers in every one of the houses to reroute them. Now, it's not impossible, but it's definitely more pipe, or PEX or whatever.
We don't have a problem with meters. Getting meters, are we good?
Yep.
Maybe for a while.
No problem. So that's something we can always do as well, but it's going to be a large undertaking, you take your three thousand accounts and you double it, now we're at six thousand meters.
Yeah.
It's a couple of meters, so. At three hundred and eighty bucks or something, plus a, it's like six hundred dollars.
Just the install.
For the install plus the meter, so we're talking a couple of dollars for three thousand.
I just want to make sure we're billing people in a way that encourages good water usage, right? Like, I want to incentivize people making wise choices in.
Depends on who's.
If a guy wants to spend a thousand bucks a month on watering his lawn, that's a business.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, but then he should get charged more than the person who's letting their poor lawn go brown.
So they would be charged more, so water's charged to actually.
Yes, yeah.
The sewer is the one that's only billed on the.
Right.
Winter usage, but water usage, like if you're using water, you get billed every moment, every thousand gallons, that's not every, every.
Stop using drinkable water on the lawns.
That would be, or flushing it.
Any other questions on the sewer fund overall?
No.
Okay, overall, I don't have any major issues or concerns, I think everything else. We may want to start looking out at projects further on, try to plan out them, if we're going to do those projects, just to plan them out a little better. I know it's always difficult, and it's always a back and forth with the CIP items, but start getting, you know, cash balances are healthy, and we should be able to plan out projects a little better, which is, which is good for us. That's all I got. Thank you.
Questions?
Yep, I don't need any action, I just acceptance is all I need, so.
All right, we can move on. Item M. Bernan's concept plan.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tonight you're asked to consider providing feedback, offering feedback on a residential concept plan provided by Jack and JT Bernans here. Just to overview the, the site, the property's east of Brockton and south of Dayton River Road, and further west of Lawndale here up in this corner on this specific area is where the proposed residential lots would go. The overall site is a hundred and seventeen and a half acres, however, if you include the previous easements that were dedicated to Dayton River Road and Brockton Lane, over their improvements over time, the property total gets up to a hundred and nineteen and a half acres. Both properties are zoned A2 and A1, which would require rezoning to A3, which is what the proposed zoning would be for this subdivision, and the entire stage is guided, the entire site is guided low-density residential and in the post-twenty staging area. So as mentioned, the, the concept proposes twelve total single-family lots, these would be unsewered lots and well-inseptic sites, including eleven and one existing lot, the single-family home that is currently on the property is proposed to be subdivided into a four-acre landlocked parcel. All new lots proposed are minimum one and a half net acres, actually, the original concept plan provided, all of the properties were one and a half net acres of usable land. It all includes a connection to Brockton Lane, and Hennepin County obviously will have their review authority on the preliminary plat once that comes through, and it also includes an outlot adjacent to the existing well site for a potential well treatment location. And in reviewing this plan internally with staff, the proposed site for the wellhouse, or for the well treatment location is of sufficient size. Here's just a view of the property looking south. Just doing a general code review of the A3 district standards, all but one lot meets the minimum requirements, the lot width would have to get addressed with Lot Five, Block Two of the proposed concept. I will also note that since the planning commission's discussion, the applicants have provided a revised concept plan, it was a pretty short turnaround, so staff looked at this original plan, but we'll get into some of the feedback that related to that change as well.
So that one thirty-seven is based on the new one?
On the old one.
Oh, it is the old.
Yep, I actually believe that the new ones are a little bit larger.
Yeah, we have it.
So a couple of considerations that I wanted to bring forward, and that the planning commission also discussed, the two-per-twenty acre standard that was adopted with the A3 district, the concept does propose twelve total single-family lots, and as I mentioned before, the total site, including all the easements previously dedicated, is roughly a hundred and nineteen point five acres. Originally, staff's recommendation was that the plat be changed to provide direct access on the lot that is landlocked to Dayton River Road where the current driveway is. After discussion with the planning commission last week, or two weeks ago now, they had offered their support for a variance to keep the easement in place, the private easement in place, in the event, they felt that leaving the easement in place rather than bringing the lot, the lot lines all the way out to Dayton River Road would offer more flexibility in the future for when the, the surrounding area gets developed, when sewer and water become available. And there were a couple other considerations related to that, the property owner has also mentioned that the two well locations, one adjacent to Dayton River Road and one adjacent to Brockton Lane, were a part of the larger parcel originally, and were subdivided to accommodate those services, so those were a couple of things that were discussed at the planning commission. Ultimately, they said, don't bring the lot lines out there, we will look at this from a variance standpoint when the preliminary plat is discussed. Staff and the applicant certainly would love to have feedback from the city council on that matter as well.
Hey?
Yes, sir.
On that, I don't remember what was, one of the commissioners brought up.
Oh, potentially an amendment to that easement language, was that what?
No, brought up, so the variance, normally we have a, I want to, strict, but a fairly strict requirement for variances, but he had mentioned.
Oh, sure, Commissioner Sargent had mentioned that.
Yes.
There was a, there was some discussion, whether at the state or federal level, related to the guidelines that are by statute, what we have to follow for variances.
Yep.
And it was his understanding that there could be potential, nothing has been set in stone yet at this time, but he did mention that one of the two entities that I mentioned before were looking into whether the variance should be directly related to practical difficulties of the property to otherwise meet the code.
Mm-hmm.
To being more so, is this a reasonable use that varies from the, that was what he had mentioned.
And I got the impression he was saying there had been rulings saying that, not that there was future, because future, you know, future changes don't help here.
Right, and we, I can certainly look into that.
Are you aware of how to satisfy variance, the three test thing?
I guess I'm not sure I understand what the question is.
There's a new test for how you calculate a variance. It's like reasonableness essentially, that they're proposing. I believe it's proposed legislation in either the federal level or the state level is it's proposed to say, basically, use reasonableness.
So, it was legislation that wasn't previous...
I'm not aware of any change in the law on that.
And I wasn't aware of that either, and from my understanding, Commissioner Sargent had mentioned that they were just looking into that, but we can certainly look and see if something has changed. Certainly, the league would have provided an update rather quickly on that matter if that did change, but I haven't seen anything from them either.
Okay.
So, that would essentially lower the bar in those three criteria.
Well, and reasonableness is so hard to...
It's subjective words.
I hope that doesn't pass.
Well, the current test is, to me, is...
Also subjective.
Yes.
But making it more subjective doesn't seem like the answer.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's all right. The other note, I think I already mentioned that the variance related to the parcel that is landlocked, the city council, or the planning commission rather, also recommended support for a variance to that as well. So, these two notes on this slide had offered support from the planning commission for applying for a variance concurrently with the preliminary plat moving forward.
And do you have language for the variance? Did you ponder that yet?
The, what are you referring to?
The findings for the variance?
In terms of the landlocked parcel or the...
Both, because we'd need both, right?
Yeah, and we'll dig into that when an application is provided, but, you know, the planning commission kind of referenced the long-term planning for this specific area and that the easement and...
No, it made sense what they said. I'm just, it's a difference between what makes sense, what looks good, and what the findings are.
Yeah, that might be something to tackle on a staff level, but we'll certainly try and find a way to get to there. It was, I was a little hesitant when Commissioner Sargent asked if we were confident that we could get there. I think that there is definitely some routes that we can look into.
Okay.
In my personal opinion, it is very hard to have findings of fact for approving a variance related to a preliminary plat, essentially because you're starting new and it's fresh. But nevertheless, we'll certainly look into that and hashing up old stories, but it kind of, it kind of reverts back to the reasoning for a variance from the sign ordinance with a freestanding sign or a pylon sign.
Yeah.
That was a subjective reasoning and kind of...
Well, the existing family home, that to me, could, you could fall back on the financial hit. The 119.5 versus 120, I mean, if you're...
Math?
Round it.
A math person.
Yeah, that one might be a little bit more of a stretch, but I understand, I understand what they're thinking.
If the council, you know, like John has mentioned before with new zoning districts and, you know, things are going to come up that we probably didn't think about.
Like this?
If, instead, rather than granting a variance in this regard, if the council was more open to establishing maybe a rounding understanding for what meets the acreage requirements...
Basic rounding rules, round to the nearest acre. I don't understand why that's a challenge.
Well, this says we have to round.
It's just not in the ordinance. It doesn't...
But they were, I watched the meeting and there seemed to be like this idea that that was going to open some sort of can of worms. I'm like, it's rounding rules, round to the nearest acre. It's not that hard. And if it rounds up to, in this case, it would round to 120, like, there's no question there. And if it was 118.5, it wouldn't. Like, I don't understand why this was somehow such a dangerous path to go down.
There just has to be a number. This is no different than the 350 for, that we talked about for sending all things, or 500, or whatever the number is. You just have to pick a number, and when the math doesn't work, the math doesn't work and you don't round, you just say it doesn't work, so.
This side with the wellhouse that's on there, that would have gone over to the 120. I mean, wishes were horses, beggars would ride, that my dad always used to tell me.
What, what?
Wishes were horses, beggars would ride. I wish, I wish, I wish.
You know, there are other...
I've never heard that one.
Put that one in the minutes.
There are certainly other alternatives that we can look into. I mean, one, and I don't know if this is recommended by staff, it hasn't really been looked into too much, but certainly those unplatted well sites could be a part of the plat to be platted outlots for services, and that would push them over the threshold without need for a variance. Obviously, the city would be a signatory of the plat in that regard, but again, that's another thing that we'd, we'd look into and...
Yeah, I think that seems like there's a way to get there. It seems like there's a way to get there. Yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure we could get there and it sounds like we're probably okay. So, go ahead.
Just a little bit of design information. The proposed concept, now this is still on the old one, there was a long discussion at the planning commission meeting about leaving Maria Avenue alone. The original proposed concept plan had Maria Avenue going up to the property line where the Maria Avenue right-of-way to the north ends. Staff originally recommended that Maria Avenue be extended to connect to this new street. The planning commission decided that that may not be the best option at the time, but if area was provided in the future by easement or establishing an outlot within the Maria Avenue right-of-way to at least accommodate a future extension if wanted, that would be something that they would have desired. And then, as well as, the planning commission also recommended that if the concept design was going to change to further east, they recommended to do an initial connection to Shady View Lane with another road stub to the east to accommodate future subdivision when sewer and water become available. So, those were kind of the, the feedback that the applicant was provided by the planning commission and staff had kind of amended that planning's, plan review report that was in your packet to show those changes. Little bit more information, just there's no sidewalks planned on the new street, was not a requirement of the A3 district when the A3 district was approved. However, the 60-foot right-of-way does offer enough room for a sidewalk to be included in the future if the council chose to do so. And then, one comment on the streetlights is, staff doesn't generally feel that there is a need for streetlights through the Maria Avenue road that's proposed, but an intersection light would be recommended by city staff and likely Hennepin County for that connection at Brockton Lane North.
Is the county going to probably require that? Because I don't like to...
Well, traditionally, they typically don't.
Oh, well.
They'll encourage it, but they don't, they don't really have lighting standards that they follow.
I don't like lights.
I would recommend putting one there.
Public safety recommends putting one there.
Lights aren't all bad. I mean, it's okay to have one light.
I don't, my, my, I don't know that you do, that they're the benefit, but people think they're at intersections, but whatever.
Especially install one at the end of Pioneer Parkway.
You have one there.
Pioneer Parkway. No, Pioneer Parkway and Dayton Road, it was specifically requested by council last year to add one.
Yeah.
Just moving along with the slideshow here, regarding a trail easement, the comprehensive trails plan does show a future roadside trail along both Brockton Lane North and Dayton River Road in this area. Staff is recommending that 20-foot easement along both roadways, the extent of the plat boundary be established in the event that Hennepin County does not request an adequate amount of right-of-way to support the trail in the future. Not asking the developer at this time to build the trail, but we want to offer the option in the future as part of our comprehensive plan to, there is sufficient room to accommodate what the comprehensive trails plan shows.
Is this a trail along Brockton lineup at all with the proposed Diamond Lake Trail and Three Rivers is envisioning?
I think it goes up there at all.
No. The proposed Diamond Lake Trail would be further east than this property.
Yeah. It would not...
It's actually, it's east of Lawndale.
Yeah. Okay.
So, this would just be a city trail?
Yes.
Regarding a landscape buffer, the buildable lots adjacent to Brockton Lane, it is required by ordinance that a 35-foot landscape buffer be established along those collector roads and arterial roads within town. General site landscaping for new lots would be subject to the general landscaping requirements of a single-family development, and that would consist of eight caliber inches of trees installed per lot, except the existing home. Typically, that information is provided and escrow for the cost of those trees to be installed are provided at the time of building permit. And then, just another note on the parks and trails, there is an area designated in parks plan and the comprehensive plan for a community park within this area, being that the proposed development is up in the west portion. Staff believes that there is enough room in the future to accommodate a community park if that was the route to go in the, in long-term within the area. With that being the case, the park and trail dedication fees would be required, as is all park and trail fees are required for any preliminary plat, and those totals are there for you at $7,293 per buildable lot.
Would the lot that already has a house on it have to pay this, or just the new?
Probably already has been.
New?
It has not been paid as it's an unplatted lot. I think that just based on what the ordinance reads for staff's recommendation would be that all lot and block properties pay those. With that being said, the council certainly can discuss it at their own, but that would be staff's recommendation is all lot and blocks, because they wouldn't pay for the outlots that would be created for that future development, but those lot and block properties would be subject to that.
So, it's either 11 or 12 then?
Essentially, yes. And then, there's another, another piece of this that I'm, I don't know if I addressed in the, oh, I did, I did address at the end, there is another lot that will have to be or is recommended by staff to be lot and blocked at this time. The applicants have discussed with staff internally and are going through the back, the background process, I guess, for eventually applying for an interim use permit for an event center adjacent to Lawndale Lane North, kind of where you see the vineyard that is along that area. I don't think that it's been, I think people are pretty aware in this room that that is something that would be coming down the line. I think just from a looking-forward standpoint, staff recommends that that be lot and blocked as well, because you can't build on an outlot. So, if that property gets platted, we wouldn't be able to issue a building permit on that lot until it gets platted. So, staff's recommendation would be to include that area as part of this project as well. So, I guess to summarize, city staff and the applicant are looking for feedback on the, the concept plans provided, and the next applications that they'd be looking to apply for would be the preliminary plat, the rezoning, the variance pending the discussion here at this point, and then, at the same time, they could concurrently apply for that interim use permit all at once for that event center.
There was discussion at the planning commission about ownership of the wetland areas. Could you talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah, so, just discussing at a staff level is found that in terms of maintenance and, I guess, sustainability of the existing wetlands in our community, the recommendation was that staff has a better ability to maintain and not run into issues with disturbing wetlands without permits when they're not a part of a residential property under private ownership. When that property line is established at the buffer, people tend to respect those property lines more so than easements, whether they be private or public. But that was in a, I guess, a question rather than a requirement, or it was a question posed to the planning commission whether they felt comfortable with doing that. The planning commission recommended that at this point, we should just maintain what we are doing currently and allowing those private easements to be laid over on top of the wetlands when they're platted into private ownership.
Given this isn't a PUD, this might be, do you, Amy? How can, I mean, let's, I mean, how would we even do that, take ownership of that property without purchasing it?
Well, I mean, it's possible to do it through dedication. I guess that would be something that could be worked out as part of the process.
As part of the park fee?
The plat dedication. It's been done in others such as ponding, it's often done, in that, that an outlot will be created for the pond and then that will be deeded to the city.
Yeah, no, that makes sense, because they don't want those ponds, those, yeah, but in this case, they, I suspect they do. And that's my question is, is how we, if we were to do that, it seems like there's no mechanism to take a pond, take a chunk of property.
Well, I mean, there, yeah, there would be. It would just be, you know, it could be through a dedication, it could be, you know, if it's part of the park fees, you know, it's possible to give, to split your park dedication requirements between, you know, part money, part land. I mean, so, I mean, it'd be something that could be worked out.
Okay.
And the other question from staff level is, would the council like to see that happen or not? Just seems to be, you know, maybe it's more compliance issues, maybe it's just better ideas that we'd be able to be, so people don't think they own the wetlands, so they can do whatever they like next to it. It's more or less a conservation of those natural resources than anything else, from staff's perspective.
I mean, they'd still have to comply with state and federal laws. I, my only concern is, is that, yeah, I mean, if it could be dedicated in lieu of park money or something like, I don't know.
That seems reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, those could be taken out of the, I mean, they're already out of the buildable area, I suppose, so unless you're including the buffer in there, which we would further recommend, you're probably not reducing their area on which the fees are based, because it's a net buildable area. But that's the thought process behind it, is if it's a dedicated outlot, a lot of people won't know that you can't impact not only the wetlands, but the buffers, they're less likely to do so if they have to trespass to violate. If they don't have to trespass, it's more common that it'll be an occurrence that we'll see out there. So, it's a, as mentioned, it's a further protection of the natural resources.
And I won't say that we run into this issue on a weekly basis or anything like that, but Marty knows that we've had issues with new lots, people coming in to do sod work and not understanding where the, the wetland buffer begins, because they come in before whatever might happen and sod up through the buffer up to the wetland when essentially that buffer is to offer an added protection to the, the wetland area, so.
Right, but they do that even with property we own. I know.
Do they sometimes?
Right. That's what I'm getting at.
Oh, okay.
I don't know whether, whether, who...
So, our ownership might not offer additional protection, is your point?
No big deal. I don't see us needing to...
City ownership would give you more of an ability to enforce that if there was a violation rather than if it was still a private ownership. I guess the question that is, is it about enforcement or prevention?
It's really a both thing, but...
And we don't even have access to it, right? There's no, there's no access to that one.
Not, yeah, I mean, absolutely have to get it as part of this plat. It would just be an easement, obviously, to get through there, drainage utility easement that we're able to go down to, take care of it if anything happened.
Also, there'd be an additional easement.
Probably be on the property lines is pretty typical when you see those drainage utility easements, those are very common amongst all developments. You have one on the property lines that we're able to get back if there's a drainage or utility issue.
Don, I did one small question.
Yeah, no, that, just the planning commission offered their recommendation to kind of maintain the status quo in that regard, and that's the kind of feedback that we are looking for, so I appreciate that.
This is probably moot, but on page 64, item 17, it says, "Right-of-way will dedicate between lots, between lots four and five to accommodate a connection to Shady View." I couldn't figure that out on either plan. I mean, like I said, it's probably moot now, but...
So, this, that comment was essentially based off the original plan where we had said, "Well, eventually, the property to the east is going to be further subdivided when sewer and water becomes available." We want to have the opportunity for Maria Avenue in this area to have a road stubbed out this way, to plan for the eventual extension of Shady View, essentially kind of having that be a T or however it gets designed.
Oh, that's what you were thinking.
Yeah, so it'd be, whether it be through here or up, up here...
So, you tee it off and hook up?
Or, or just, or just stub it at the edge of the property boundary here, so then the new development that comes in in the future can have the opportunity to plan their roads and then making that connection.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have.
Go ahead.
Is the, well, first, this is why I wanted more than 1.5 as your minimum, because I think these are kind of small for what, at least my goal was, which is why I pushed for three, for the record. But to the point of net, if we're talking about easements for a trail, are these still meeting the 1.5 net? Do easements affect that?
Easements would affect that, and that would have to be incorporated at the time of the preliminary plat. So, there is some tweaks that will have to be addressed from the concept plan to the preliminary plat. And I think even along with this, with this revised plan, I think staff would have some comments to offer related to just the layout of it in general, related to the design. I know that, I don't know if the applicant has engaged with, with a civil engineer to offer plans that will have to be required at the time of preliminary plat, but I'm sure that they'll have some design changes or recommendations related to this as well. So, when that, when they come on board, they'll be able to do that. One of the things that, just internally, that we were looking at was that this proposed lot here, adjacent to the well site, would be bound by three different roadways. So, that would be something that we would probably try to avoid in terms of the preliminary plat review, so.
Just because it's bad practice, or we actually have a requirement, a zoning requirement?
The code does recommend to limit double-frontage lots as much to the extent possible. In this case, it would be a triple front, so we would try to avoid that even more so, I guess, was kind of... Again, like I said, these would be recommendations provided by staff and at the council's discretion. at the council's discretion.
So the, the easements that we have on every lot, which I didn't, didn't realize, are those on, are those on all lots?
All platted lots, uh, have a dedicated boundary easements for drainage and utility, yes.
So that being said, um, typically easements aren't allowed to be touched.
Yep.
So where do, I mean, do people put fences on them all the time?
Yeah, so we just note that if we have to go in there for drainage utility easement, we will have to remove your fence and it will be up to you to put it back if it's dotted in their, in their fence permit.
That is stated in the code that fences within, located within drainage and utility easements are subject to removal and.
Everything, yep. I know you put, if you put something in an easement, you.
Almost every lot we've ever planted in this city has a drainage utility easement between them. And it's not much on either side, but the two of them share enough that we're able to get through.
Yeah. Well, it's.
I think the plan here actually shows 30-foot easements, um, from the design, but, uh, it's the recommendation in the, um, common standard for easements on, uh, properties would be the side yards would have a five-foot drainage and utility easement and the front and rear would be 10.
Yep.
And is the trail easement in addition to that or in combination with that?
In addition.
Okay.
So one thing I'm not quite following along with is that we're, we're using the A3 and the two per 20, um, rules here. So the way that I had understood that was that if, you know, the, the lot sizes overall needed to meet that standard and, but not each individual lot. But that, that if it's, if it looks something like this, then the balance of it is, is essentially an outlot and not, not buildable. So how does that then play with the, the potential for the, um, event center being built there?
Sure, so, uh, the, it's, staff was thinking about this in two different ways. Um, one, the, a part of the preliminary plat resolution, that lot and block would be, uh, conditioned to not be allowed to have a single-family residential building on it. Um, and in the event that sewer and water becomes available, that would, uh, eventually change. And then two, at the same time, um, the event center is under, is, uh, allowed under an interim use permit. So, um, while it is an interim use permit, the definition of the interim use is that the intention is that it's not going to be there forever. Um, now that changes case by case, um, but with that interim use permit, that would be the, kind of that, that separation of what is the residential of this project area and what is not.
The one in 10 doesn't, doesn't take any impact from that.
That would be my understanding.
Cause it's an I. So when it develops, that I U P is yanked effectively.
Essentially.
I just wasn't, you know, I just didn't quite, I don't know. He's gonna do one and, and, and the other.
Is there a reason why, maybe this is a question for you, but, uh, why that, uh, the, the current home was, is, is going to be lotted off and not just lumped in with the rest of it as one lot?
So, yeah, I think that the applicant can answer that better than I can.
So I guess.
Is it a legal deal? Just as, so you can own it instead of Jack or?
My parcel?
Yeah.
Yeah, the reason that we were, um, having that lotted off is because, because I don't own the land under my home, we had to go through unconventional financing.
Oh.
And so we would parcel it off so then I could refinance conventionally.
You could own the land.
Yeah.
That's right. Okay.
Um, cause, uh, under what we're doing right now, it's under a 99-year lease, right? And so that, that's how we got around that, but, uh, we would like to take that burden away if we could.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I'm just curious why.
Yeah, that was the purpose.
Any other comments?
Um, like I said, I, I wish the lots were bigger, um, and we may need to go back to the A3 and make them bigger. But that's neither here nor there because we're working with what we have right now. Um, I, I did follow the conversation about the roads and I think that is really important to get figured out because, um, these are the things that you kind of have one chance to do it right and like this is the chance to do it right. And the neighbors were really, and I think the neighbors were clear that they had no issue with the development. It was all about how, like, that, the roads to the development. So I think that's where we need to do our due diligence. Um, and it'd be really interesting to see. This is one where I would really like to see the ghost plating, maybe not for all of it, but that, like, how, extend the, this little bit out, um, I, I would like, because I think that tells the road, like, the ghost plating will tell the roads, which will tell where everything needs to go.
I mean, have it extended to the river?
Yeah, like if it, so like, if you just drew, um, a line basically just north of your house, right? Like, and that line just extended all the way out, if we could just ghost plat that to see how the, mostly in my, for me, it'd be where the, the roads are going to lay out. Um, that would make me feel a lot better about like, yes, this makes sense. We're not going to be causing problems 20, 50 years down the road, maybe sooner, who knows? Um, so I'd really like to see that part ghost platted. Um, but overall, like, I had no issue with it as, as an idea. Um, one other thought came into my head and now, oh, um, I also want to make sure we never get into more crappy easements. So the whole easement driveway thing makes me twitchy immediately because of what we just dealt with. I don't know if you were in the meeting for that earlier part. So as long as that easement is somehow written in such a way that no future council is going to be sitting here cursing us the way I am currently cursing the previous city council, um, I'm fine with it, but I, I would like that looked over by many a lawyer, um, to make sure that's all.
I think that's a private one, right?
Well, how did they get a private one than the other that?
I think the problem with the other one was they got something for it and that was the way, a way to develop that, that west lot. I don't know that, but that's my guess.
Okay. Okay, anyway.
Because at that point, the city had a lever.
Okay.
The way that the planning commission's discussion touched on this, uh, was that, you know, with the resolutions, a condition of approval can be related to that private easement being amended to accommodate future subdivision, um, and then granting eventual right-of-way to that lot when the surrounding area gets developed. And that information can be as part of the resolution or a condition of approval, subject to the review of the, the city.
And I think that's also where like the ghost plating could be helpful because then it would show like, how would you get access to your house as the rest of it develops? Like, that could be maybe part of the ghost plating, like this is how that would, that would make me feel better about the whole thing. I did think of my second question, which I think was answered, but I just want to clarify it. Um, because my initial thought was, okay, so this happens, um, these 10, 10 or 11 new homes, lots get created. They're sold to private individuals, homes are built, and you're left with the remainder. What's, how do we ensure that they don't come back and then do it again? And they're like, okay, we've got this much acreage left. Now we want to carve off this bit and build, you know, five more homes. And then, like, what is our guarantee that that doesn't happen?
The zoning and map amendment that designates these as an A3 district.
Okay.
Essentially what, uh, if you're familiar at all with the A2 district that's in the zoning ordinance, it allows for a lot split for a small property or homesteaded property, um, to be split off and have a larger outlot for maybe a non-conforming A1 parcel, um, to allow for a house to be accommodated and homestead the smaller portion, have the remaining out, be an outlot and unbuiltable. Um, that's how they essentially track that information as well. Um, so that'd be one of our mechanisms to, to manage that A3, um, kind of boundary.
Yeah, I'm just thinking 20 years from now, none of us are here. How do, like, how do we make sure that that is still?
It'd be the same way we've always done it, right? There's records kept.
Okay, okay.
Something like the property IDs.
You know, you know, and a lot of the times when someone first approaches the city about developing a property or redeveloping a property, we kind of go back to the previous resolutions that were attached to that. To see if there were any stipulations related to it. Um, that would be a condition of approval related to the preliminary plat resolution that these outlots would not be allowed to be buildable until, um, municipal sewer and water were available and.
It was completely rezoned at that point?
Exactly.
Okay.
We just got to make sure it's in a second condition of that approval, otherwise if it's not a condition, it makes it very difficult to track.
Okay, thank you for that. That was the thing I couldn't think of.
Anybody else?
Okay, you think, I don't know, we gave you anything, did we?
No, I, I certainly I have, uh, I think we have enough and, uh, we'd be reaching out to the applicant to establish kind of a, another meeting to touch base on what was discussed and kind of the next steps moving forward, so. You have any questions?
Yeah, just a couple. Um, so the road and the future ghost plating. So the intent of the, the hard corner there was to allow for flexibility in the future ghost plating. And there is not significant cost to ghost plating further. And so the thought process there was to allow the ghost plating to be done nearer to the time that it would make more sense to do it nearer to the time to allow for flexibility in what the, I guess, the goals and objectives of the future development would look like. Is kind of the idea there. Just to explain that, um, the other thought that we had or questions that we had is the park fees. Um, and you guys kind of touched on the dedication and some of that around the pond. And some of the thought that we had was actually the outlot for the water treatment facility. Could that, I assume there would be some sort of costs around that and could that, the park fees be, uh, that outlot be dedicated for the park fees in that way? Um, I don't know if there would be an assigned cost to that outlot, but, you know, the intent is to help make sure that we ensure that your future water treatment facility plant is put where you'd like it to be.
That outlot A is where any treatment facility would go, right?
Yes.
And we were looking at, we would look at getting that?
That would be the goal of this, of the plating process, yes.
Yeah.
And how would we, how would we get that?
Typically it's done through the plating process.
No, I understand that, but it's not a P U D, so we don't just take it, right? Am I missing something?
We've done that, yeah, we've done it historically where they've just given us the lot. Doesn't mean that they have to, but.
He's going to get credit on the perk, yeah, it's going to be credited back somehow. Well, that's what I'm asking.
And not necessarily every time, but I don't know if Jason wants to touch on it.
Just add a, add a minimum. There are no fees, um, charged against those properties. That's what's been done in the past. Brabird Trails, for example, there was two lots that were dedicated for future well sites.
Yep.
Um, Riverwalk, there was two lots that were combined and given for another well site in that, in that one. Um, so certainly don't go into the fee calculations. Payment above that would have to be negotiated or decided separately.
We've historically not paid for those sites. Ever.
Well, but usually we had a lever, right? It was a P U D or, I mean, no.
Just due to the.
I don't think Brabird was a.
Yeah, Brabird was at R3.
Same with Riverwalk.
Riverwalk was R3.
DA or whatever.
Did we forgive some other related fees?
Um, it, it was just withdrawn from the calculation is my understanding at least. So there was just no fees applied. So the, making up a number, the $20,000 in fees per lot was just not charged because the lot was deeded to the city instead.
For just that lot you're talking?
For just the lot.
For just that lot, that's correct.
Yeah, the, the issue is it's an outlot, so it's not buildable anyways.
Right.
So what fees would there be on that?
Well, it's still in the area. So residential is usually a per lot fee, um, but often that is broken down and charged by an area. It, it's simply 2.6 acres or units per acre. So it just come out of the calculation. If it is an outlot, we could just offset fees to accommodate it as well. Would be another way to calculate it, just based on an area method, which comes to the same number.
I'm not sure I'm tracking.
It sounds like there's a, a different path. I guess I'm struggling a little bit with, you know, using parks fees for something completely unrelated. I'm not opposed to us doing something along the lines of what you're talking about.
One thing I'd, I'd mention, and I'm getting well out of my wheelhouse here, but, uh, if, if it's used to satisfy park fee requirements, there might be conditions that are set on that parcel. I don't really know the technical component of that. Um, but that restricts the potential use for it. So I think just to voice, to be careful of how that is dedicated to satisfy that requirement.
No, I understand, I understand.
Requirements don't fall on.
But, so let me ask you this. Let's say this is all going through per zoning request. I mean, everything's hunky-dory. And they say, I don't want to give you outlot A. It's a straight zoning request. How do we reject those? We don't want. We don't have outlot A because he said, I don't want to give it to you.
Sure.
Seems like I'm missing something.
No, then I'm guessing at that point a price would have to be negotiated.
Then we would say, okay, if you don't want to give it to us, then we'll have to pay you. Like I said, but historically, to save the city money, we have not done that to be fiscally responsible. So because we are trying to be fiscally responsible, we don't have money to be able to pay for it.
The calculations in the R districts are a little different, right? They're not.
They're based on a per lot, not on an acre.
Yeah.
Not per acre. Although they break down per acre if you were to do, say, a developer looks at it and goes, okay, it's 2.6 units per acre, isn't much it costs.
So I guess my point is that's why for them it might make more sense to give us the outlot than to necessarily put a price on it. Because they have other calculations involved than this would. Cause it sounds like you're wondering why the heck did they ever give it to us in the first place?
That's, I don't think we do. And so what, what we're saying is, is there a way that we can give you the outlot and be forgiven of the park fees or something to that nature? Is, we want to make it work, but we would also like to help with some of the costs that we're incurring as well.
I'm like, that's.
Yeah, I would, I would like to see it work. I just don't like the idea of using the park fees to do it.
I would highly recommend not using park fees to do it because if you use it for park fees, we're going to have another lover's park.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't think we need to do that. I mean, let's say he said, sell it to us for a dollar.
Yeah.
We give him a dollar, he gives us a dollar in park fees. It's still park money. It goes to what?
You can't give him, you can't have him give us a dollar and trade for land.
It's not trade. We bought that.
So you bought it for a dollar? We bought it for a dollar? He gives us a dollar?
We need to buy outlot A. Outlot A we want, right? I'm assuming we want it.
We would like to use it for a future wellhead removal plant so that we aren't buying other land to put a wellhead removal plant on.
Absolutely, yep. They have a piece of property that we want.
Sure. For 80,000.
Am I not tracking here?
Yeah, that's, that's where I'm at is.
So I think you're, I think you're struggling with your personal side of things, mayor, and then the city side of things. Like, on the city side of things, as staff members, I'm trying to be fiscally responsible with the city dollars and say, hey, we don't have to pay you. And now you're saying.
Why did you say that?
Because we don't have to pay you for it if you're looking for a development in the city. He doesn't have to. No, he doesn't. But I'm not going to tell him that, I'm not going to go out and say, hey, we should pay you for that. And the idea is that we're trying to help him and work with him. Now, I'm not saying he's dumb, he's going to say, oh, yeah.
And he's holding her hand.
If I, I don't know if this helps at all, but I mean, if, if outlot A, if the purpose of what it's, would be used for is to serve the plat, then it's reasonable to dedicate for a developer to dedicate it to the city at no cost to the city and deed it over as part of the plating process. And as, as Councilor Fashion has said, I mean, it's not a good idea to use, and Zach has been recommending against it too, to use an outlot that's going to be used for a future wellhead or whatever as part, as part of the park dedication process. You know, those things should be, should be separate.
Yep.
Um, and so it really would come out kind of in the, in the full plating process, what the, the purpose of the outlot is and, and, you know, whether it's, it's reasonable to dedicate it or for the city to pay value for it. It, but as it is, I mean, it's very common for, in, in a plating process for property to be given to the city for a city purpose that, for a public purpose that serves the, the, the development and any potential future development in the area.
For no cost.
Exactly.
I'm not saying both sides. I mean, he wants something for it, the city wants it.
I'd want stuff for free too.
No, that's what I say. The, your personal side and the mayor.
And all, and all you got to do is if.
Not a personal side, it's doing what's right.
Well, and.
It's not confused though.
And, and it is possible to, to work out the, the, the value of, you know, the total costs that, I mean, there's a way to kind of work it out in the, in the, in, in all of the overall fees and, and, and costs with the plat, but it's just a matter of, of how it is broken down on paper.
The simple matter is, is if he doesn't want to give it to them, we don't have to. The simple matter is, is if he doesn't want to give it to him, we don't have to allow the development either.
That's not my understanding of things are per zoning.
Yeah, I don't, and you could find a reason to deny an A three district anytime.
I will say at the same time, too, the development agreement is going to also have cash requirements for public improvements. And one of those public improvements, now, there's not gonna be water and sanitary sewer fees related to this because that's not gonna be involved here. But the stormwater cash requirement will be a part of the development agreement that the applicant will also have to be subject to. So, maybe the park and trail fees is not a mechanism for accommodating that outlaw. But there might be something in the stormwater fees or something like that for crediting. And I'm not gonna deny that someday that well site or that well treatment site isn't going to serve this property. But at this point, based on the development that is proposed.
It doesn't.
It's not gonna, it's not gonna make a difference for the development, so.
Anything else we can?
So, I think the applicant's gonna look to us to say, are we paying for that lot now or are we not? And I'm sounding, it sounds like we're paying for that lot.
Except to these guys. I, at this point, I don't know that we need to make that decision.
I think there's a benefit to the city there that, you know, although it's, there's nothing specific on the table here, but it sounds like there are more appropriate, well, there are other fees that are gonna be involved in this development that we could consider forgiving or partially forgiving to accommodate some kind of reasonable compensation to you for that piece that we want.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, it's certainly no different than your permit building. I mean, we gave up, we gave up a lot of fees for a roadway. So, I mean, it's workable, it's between them guys. And then we'll figure it out.
Yeah.
With the, oh, I think actually it'd probably be fine. I was, because it was, it's 1.5 net acres and with the new plan, because there's the wetlands, which obviously wouldn't be part of the net. But it looks like most of those that cut into the wetland are well over 1.5, so you're probably.
All lots are, have the 1.5 net buildable. So, that was the intent of all those. And, yeah, if you go, if you look closely, it is all there.
Would it be possible to put a tra, like, when we talk about buffers for wetlands and preserving them, is it possible to put a tra, like, is putting a trailer on the wetland still like a doable thing as far as like considered protection? Because is that, is that a way that we can all, because the idea from the city is, if we control the wetland, we have, we can, you know, do a better job to protect it. And I do get that, like, property lines, whatever. And then there's the issue of the park fees. But is, could part of it be like if, if giving the wetland or dedicating land for the park fee? Because that is an option, right? Park fees is either land for a park or the fee or a combination. So, would one option be giving us the wetland for a park and to put the trail around it to offset a part, you know, a certain proportion of that fee? That might be a way there as well that would help the city with the, we would like to have a little bit more control over the wetland. I don't know if control is the right word. Ability to ensure that it is protected. Because it's one thing when you guys are farming it, right? But like, now we're talking about possibly three, five additional homeowners who are all right next to that wetland and then having to trust all of them to do the right thing for the wetland versus the city. But that could be dedicated as a portion of, as a park basically and put a little trail on it that would serve that neighborhood directly. That could maybe offset some of the fees and give us a chance to have access to it for maintenance purposes because we could have access along that trail. So, that might be another, when you're talking about ways that we can negotiate and find ways to ease some of the financial burden, but still be a win on our end and give us something that we wanted and also help you offset the concern you had.
And I think we would be open to that discussion for sure. I would say that in, some of these properties are, you know, kind of bought for privacy reasons. And so, sometimes that can hurt property value. And you would be upping the traffic around the wetland, which.
Is not necessarily a good thing either.
That's, that would be my only caution to it, but we are open, I mean, we're obviously open for whatever discussion you guys would like to have. But that would be, I guess that would be my first reaction would be, property values, because those are the properties that are going to pay for this project, right?
Yeah.
And just the increased traffic and privacy.
And the wetland does go into a neighbor, so you couldn't really do anything all the way around it anyway, but.
Yeah, the trail would serve five of them.
Yeah. Just trying to find a compromise that would maybe make everybody happy.
Yeah, and we're open to all ideas. We really are, so I appreciate that.
Any more concerns, any discussion? Are we good? Sounds like we're about 45 minutes away. Okay.
You're good with most things before we even talk about.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate the time.
Item O.
I think we need to talk about this for a good hour.
We'll make a motion that we approve this.
All right.
More of a, more of a.
We had a motion for?
Yep. We can, we can still discuss it, but I mean, it's.
Let me have a second.
I'll second.
Uh, Dave seconded it.
Oh, Dave would second.
Go ahead. Oh, I was just gonna know, more of a formal process for property entering into the egg preserve program that is authorized by state statute for egg dedicated properties to enter into. So, we use the S A zoning district to track these properties that are enrolled in this program. Following approval tonight, it's expected that the applicant would take the necessary steps at Hennepin County to enroll this property within the program. So, that's the reason for the rezoning request.
Should have never came up.
This, yeah, this property was previously in there and was, it expired from the program in 2022, so.
Anybody have any comments? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
I will obviously abstain.
You will abstain?
I would hope so.
Pass is four to zero. All right, on to item P. I had like a half hour more of that.
Denied.
Yeah, we're, we're 45 minutes over here, an hour and a half.
Mayor, Members of Council, this was based on the work session tonight. We were before you for an approval for, to post for full-time fire. Ms. Alvin, Chief Hennixen are here to answer any questions you may have.
Is this a post for one or two?
This is for both.
Two.
Yeah, this is the extension of the work session. The reason we had the work session is to try to limit the amount of conversation at the council meeting. I don't know if that accomplished what we were looking to do, but.
I'm more confused now than I was when I first got here.
Here to answer any questions.
So, I didn't see a lot during the work session because I was thinking a lot. I think.
Do you want me to go back to, any of the slides I could go back to, obviously, and touch base on? I didn't want to put them in there twice, so.
No, I was just, I did some calculations based on the comparables. And I think, and I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, but I think what I was hearing was that it, there is clearly a relationship between the amount per person a city is spending and the number of calls answered, for obvious reasons. And so, then the question becomes, how come of the ones that we were given in the comparison, four of them have much, so Nooka Champlin, Maple Grove, Elk River, and St. Michael are much cheaper per resident, but also have a far smaller call volume, right? Per resident, like if you look at the numbers. And the highest cost is Osseo, and they're also the highest number of calls compared to the number of residents, followed by Rogers and us. And so, then the question is, you know, why are we answering, why do we have so many more calls per resident than some of these other communities do? And is it, and I don't know the answers, but things that pop into my head, is it part of our, a more aging population, right? Like, is it that we have an older population, particularly when you're talking like falls and things like that? Is that, is that part of it? Is it about the fact that we send fire to all these calls and these other communities don't send fire to all of these calls? That's part of it. Is it something to do with like the relationship some of these communities have with their neighbors? And like, how many, you know, like, are they going to more like community, like, is part of it that they are answering the call for neighbors more than or don't have neighbors answering their calls? And I don't honestly know all the answers to that, but those were some of the things that popped into my head when I was part of that conversation. Secondly, I do think, again, Mayor, you brought up this point about showing up to a call and then not doing much. Doesn't necessarily motivate me to like go to the next call. I have, I have never been a firefighter. I don't have any family who are firefighters, so I can't begin to speak to how, how that, but I can just for myself, put myself in that picture. I got called, I rushed out, dropped everything, show up, and then I just stand there, do nothing. Would make me hesitate to go to the next one. And I don't know, I don't have a clue how to address that, but I'm guessing if that is happening frequently, that might be part of why people aren't showing up. I don't know what the answer to that is, though. And then lastly, looking at the other cities that have paid, you know, more paid on call. I will say the Rogers thing, when I looked at their website, I only saw four. I didn't see five full-time people at Rogers. But that was their 2024 report, so that very well may have changed for 2025. They may have added someone. But they all have other very, very explicit duties that are like laid out in their job description. And so, that's where I'm at. I, I could, right now, today, with what I have before me, I could get behind hiring one additional full-time person if there were like really clearly outlined additional duties for that person to do. And this schedule really showed that those three full-time people were covering most of the time. I could get behind that. But I also don't know, I feel like I haven't had as much experience in this. Like, this is not my area of expertise by any stretch of the imagination. So, I would also defer to other people. But those were the things that were going through my head as that conversation was happening.
You want us to answer the questions?
You just want discussion.
I, I don't know if there's any answers to those questions, right? I think that was part of it, is I don't think there are clear, you know, this is the answer to that question.
I think all of your issues or all of the, is it this or is it that? I think it's a combination, speaking from my experience only. I think it's a combination of a lot of those things. I think you kind of hit part of it on the head, especially in my house. It is the, this is the fifth call of today, and I've gone to every one of them. Oh, and I feel like I haven't used any of my skills. Or my husband moved to Station One to support the fire department. We live a mile this way, but my husband travels to Station One to provide leadership at that department because he was asked to by the chief. And he doesn't make calls. So, there's an issue there with getting paged out, putting your pants on, running out the door at midnight, and you get halfway into Dayton and you're canceled. Or Station Two's got it, or like whatever that, you know, may be why you got canceled. But I think what I've heard from the firefighters is that part of the push for or support for this model, especially from Station One, is exactly that. It's the want to use your skills, and right now, we're not getting to use them. Especially when you get on these critical calls and practice is everything. Which I think opens up for me a broader issue, which we won't address tonight. But I have an issue with, you know, training, has been an issue in the past. Past year has been very rough. We do have a new training schedule that Kevin put out, so that's great. Super excited about seeing that. But I have some issues with the way we do our training. And so, I feel like there's areas of opportunity there that may help some of that. I guess I'm already on my soapbox, so if you, okay, I will continue and then I will be quiet and sit back. I addressed my Station One issue, my broader issue with training. The other thing is, is every one of these, both of these schedules, both of our chiefs are on at the exact same time. That, to me, raises a red flag, that raises an issue for me. Right now, and again, this is going to open up another can of worms that we will not address tonight, but I will make a comment and then move on. At this time, we have two full-time chiefs, Monday through Friday at the station, and a paid-on-call firefighter there. And you're telling me that we're, those three are there and we are having a hard time covering the day calls? I have an issue with that. If we need an admin person, I feel like that's another conversation that we should have because some of these do have full-time chiefs and an admin. Maybe that's what we need, maybe we need an admin that can go on calls and it, then it's three people. But again, those are larger issues and things that we need to be talking about where I don't know that blanket stating we're gonna add two full-time is gonna cover or fix those issues. The other issue I brought up in the work session is that in both of these schedules, neither one of our chiefs are on at all on a weekend, not one weekend. And I feel like that's a missed opportunity for mentorship. I feel like we are a very young department that was highlighted multiple times tonight. And I have come in and spoke to both chiefs about my concern about how young our department is and how we need more mentorship. And I feel like that's a missed opportunity. What else was there? Oh, para. So, if the requirements for para are just that we have a scheduled shift, I'm not seeing the correlation between needing the full-time and moving our firefighters to the para retirement. If it really is that it just has to be scheduled, we have two eight hour, or two, two four-hour scheduled training shifts. Do those not count towards para?
No, the time spent on the, on any time, if you were underneath para, would count towards your time. But it's not just, your whole time has to be, from what I understand with para is that you have to have the same, you have to have a schedule for the whole time. You can't have, okay, paid-on-call for this portion and then scheduled a lot of time for trainings, for example. Because it's not, it's been like, you don't have the same, it's a totally different benefit for show up when you can, paid-on-call model than it is with all scheduled shifts. So, you'd have to have all scheduled shifts.
Okay.
Or you have to have paid-on-call.
But we, in the full-time model, we have all call times as well. So, how does that factor into what you're saying now?
That's what I mean, so that I saw that.
I thought it was just scheduled time.
That's what I said, but it's gotta be more than just two. So, I can do some more, I can do some more research on it, I understand.
I would love that, because there's a lot of questions. Okay, so then my next question is, is I understand that we had some pushback, and I respect Paul's opinion because he ran the fire department for a long time. But I didn't hate, as a fire wife, I didn't hate response teams at night. I was fine with that. I got our whole schedule out and it said, this is overnight, you respond to these. Is there a way in the middle where that is a scheduled shift, right? You're on call, could you be working elsewhere? I work a job where I work from home twice a week, every other week, and then I work one Friday and the next Friday from home. So, could it be that you're being paid one hour, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, to be at home for those overnights? You know you're gonna get paid an hour for each one of those days. It's scheduled, and then you just show up from your 10 to 5 a.m., whatever calls above and beyond that hour, you get paid for. But if you get no calls come out, you still get paid for one hour. You're scheduled, you're working elsewhere. I just, I guess what I'm getting at is there's a hundred ways to skin a cat here. And I feel like subbing in to full-time fire, requiring these shifts, it doesn't really solve the issues that we're having. And yes, you know, I have heard that it's, you know, the predictability, I, I get that piece of it. I've been doing this for 10 years. Like, I understand when the pager goes off. I've painted my nails many a time in that parking lot on my way to date night because fire call came out, it was critical, we stopped right here. And like, I just feel like there's somewhere in between where, one, we can address the issue of wanting to train and wanting to be here, the para issue, scheduled shift. Like, I feel like there's something in between that we're not talking about. And again, maybe that is an admin, because I know, again, like I said, we're not really touching too deep on it. But we are paying a paid-on-call firefighter right now to be at the station during the day. Not responding to calls, doing admin work, I think is the answer that I got, no in-depth, no job description. So, if we need an admin, let's do that. Maybe this, one of these full-time positions is an admin position who responds to calls. I would love to talk about that. I would love to talk about the other options, but I feel like we've been given, it's this or that or pound sand. And I don't, I was maybe really aggressive, I apologize. But that's what it feels like to me.
It seemed like it's one, one resident.
Yes, and I don't know if that's a sign up for a weekend or a holiday. We'll pay double time for that one hour if you make any other calls. But I don't see the value in sitting here at the station. And I get we labeled all those things that they could be doing, and that's all great and wonderful. But for, also, there is no job description. But for, also, there is no job description here. So how do we know what these firefighters are doing? So I would have hoped, and what I was hope, like, I guess what I was hoping for tonight would be to be given a job description and get to look at it and say, that's what we're approving these full-time firefighters for. And then to say, nope, that's not what we want them to be doing. This is what we think they should be doing. So for me, as a blanket statement of just approve the posting, I'm sorry, but I love the fire department, I've given 10 years of my life to this thing, so has my husband, but I can't blanket statement say yes to this, and I will get off my soapbox. Thank you. Sorry for yelling.
I think you're fine. Yeah, I, I don't know. I feel like we've been down this road a whole bunch of times through the budget process, and, and it has been felt very much to me anyway, like it's, you know, the broken system we have now, or this full-time, two full-time positions in a, in a duty crew model. And, I don't know, I feel like I spent the summer talking about this, but, you know, that's, that's where we still are. And I think that the duty crew model, it makes sense to me, but it's too soon. I've always felt that way, and I've said that the entire time. But we put it in the budget, and so.
I will eat crow on that, on behalf of council's past who have sat in this chair that I am directly connected to, I will eat crow on that for you. I apologize.
You know, is this, I think that there are a bunch of different models that we could be looking at, but we, we have not succeeded in being able to do that. And, you know, that's my frustration around it.
Since day one, when we started the budget back in April, these were all wrapped up in a package, and you had to do the package, or it didn't work. And I, I, I don't know. I mean, the 30 versus 17, I think that's a different issue, that's a separate issue. You know, how we do calls, whether they're here, whether they're here sometimes, or whether they're not here at all, but they get some sort of benefit to, to sign an up for call? That's, to me, that's a, that's a separate issue. Anybody else?
Let's see, I personally don't see any difference between, there's 160, like I said, in the work session. I mean, there's 168 hours out of the week. For six hours from each firefighter, everything is covered. And it's just a matter, to me, it's just a matter of putting a schedule on it and putting a name on that day or that time. And for some reason, we don't want to try it, unless, unless we do full-time. One thing that really puzzles me about this fire department has been a mess for the last four years. I mean, it just, it's, it's completely, completely been changed around. We're one of the most expensive fire departments there is compared to other cities. I mean, we're not that far behind Champlin and Anoka Champlin, and they're 50,000 people. The other thing that really puzzles me, we have two full-timers right now, and I just asked this question yesterday. There was an issue with a lawn care business on 117th about a year ago. And we have.
IUP?
Yes. There was supposed to be an inspection done on a couple of fuel tanks, and to my knowledge, that hasn't been done yet. What are we doing? I mean, it's been over a year, or about a year. I mean, this is terribly mean, but I, two more full-timers? I'd bring a deck of cards so you guys got something to do. It's easier to play with four than it is two. I just don't get it. I mean, we're not, we're not trying to do anything different, other than this is what, this is what I sold to them, this is what is going to work. I agree with Dave, I think it's way too early. And I know we talked about it at budget time. And at that time, I was willing to go ahead and go with the program and, I just, I'm just not seeing a lot of progress.
Is there a world where we find something in the middle, whatever that looks like, right?
For the call?
Um, just for like destruction of the department? And maybe part of that plan, if you will, is, you know, I hate to be like, we're five years out, we're tied, because I hate that. But is there a, a way to look at, you know, like, this is what we're going to try, or this is what we're going to, and then, you know, like a progression almost? Because I'm not denying that there's value in this eventually, but I just feel like there's lots of things in between that we could do. I might wish with the ass.
Like you said, there's lots of recipes.
There, yeah, there's a hundred ways to skin a cat.
I like cats, do you?
I love cats, I've meow cat did on my ankle. I love cats. Maybe not so much skinning them. So I guess, yeah, that's kind of where I'm at, where I would like to look at other options, unless all-the-way-or-nothing options, maybe somewhere in between. But I also will say that I think I personally, I've heard from a number of firefighters and spouses, but it's really hard, and I know we have Bill here today. But it's hard to know what everybody wants to do when their options are, they don't know what we're willing to do, right? Like, so are we willing to pay for them to be at home? Like, it's like, without the department really knowing where we're at, I feel like the back-and-forth, I don't want to play telephone, I guess maybe that's what I'm saying. So I don't know how we close that gap, but what I hear and what other people hear are very different, and I think that that maybe speaks more to a morale issue. But that's my hesitation for, you know, the, this is what the firefighters want, because, just because they're not saying anything out loud doesn't mean that they don't have an opinion. So I, I just wanted to like, I maybe like throw that caveat in there, too.
I, I've always thought that some sort of a, and, and not even just the fire department, maybe all the departments, some sort of an anonymous polling or something. I've, I've, I have over the years said that a number of times, that it'd be nice to get some very direct questions and get some very direct answers anonymously, because some of these people are afraid to say anything.
Terrified.
So I.
Yeah, unfortunately, if, if you chit-chat with anybody, they get in trouble.
Okay, so.
Can I ask a question before you go any farther about asking for motions or anything else? Is there a way for whatever the, like, I guess? I guess, well, okay, I, we have to run it down, I apologize, I'm talking out loud. If we are not ready to approve to post for the full-time fire, if that's the scenario we're going down, is there a way to also put in that motion, if you will, that the requirements for the firefighters right now don't change again, until we figure out what the direction of the department is? Because we've had more than one change this year about call requirements, and the last thing I want to do is to walk out of this meeting, if that's the road we go down, and then we all of a sudden throw on a 25 or a 30% for the volume that they have to meet? Because we have that right now, where it keeps kind of moving. And I would just like to pause it and say, we're not changing anybody's requirements until we figure out what the model looks like and what the schedule looks like.
So as it sits now, if, if this has a motion and a second, and, and three of us are good with it, it, it's, it's approved.
Right.
If there's no motion, or no second, or not three, it just doesn't get approved.
It just doesn't.
It just dies.
It just dies. So what you're, what you're looking at is something kind of separate.
Extra?
It's something separate. Now, we do, I mean, it seems like we probably have a lot more questions that may need work session, or may need, I, I think we will, we'll need more discussion on these issues.
I think so, too.
Would it not make sense to have fires, have a work session with the whole department and council?
I don't know.
Can you not do that, though?
Well, I don't know that you're.
You're not going to get.
You're not going to get people to come forward and say, I had multiple say-to-me tonight, I'd love to be there to support you, but I can't put myself in that situation. So I don't know that you're going to get everyone together, to be honest, and get the actual feedback, unless you went to them or they were allowed to come to you.
They're always allowed to come to us.
Not in, no, not in Dayton.
No, okay, so I'm going to, I'll chime in. It's all, it's very much directed at me. So as employees, if there is an issue with an employee, it is expected to go up the chain of command. That is always expected to go up. If it doesn't reach that chain of command, then it's supposed to go to the next person above that, and the next person above that. That person should eventually be me. If it's an issue with me, then it should go to council, because that is my bosses, is U5. The problem, I wouldn't say maybe it's a problem, it's just the contradiction that we have is that.
Can I just say something here?
Yeah, yeah.
You guys be very careful what you say.
Yeah, well, it's just.
Because of data practices, but go ahead, I know, I know where you're going.
It's just more or less that, you know, where are they at? Are they employees or are they residents? And that's the, that's the contradiction that we have.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's just where it's at, just period, end of story, is are they employees or are they residents? And so that's where the.
And they're both, and that's why it's a challenge.
And that's why it's a challenge.
As a resident, they can always come to us as a resident to us. As an employee, there is supposed to be a chain of command, but that goes back to the other issue.
It is a very much a gray line, and it is very difficult. It is not a simple black and white. I, it's, yeah. My opinion is that if they're talking to you about something other than the department, they are a resident. A water issue, a street problem, whatever, if they're, you know.
I, I will say, though, that I have had residents talk to me about the fire department.
Impossible, yeah.
And so.
And they might know something from somebody else, and then that makes it. Then, I would like that to come to me, though. It would be nice to know, like, what's happening that I, I don't hear.
For many reasons, they should come to you.
Yeah, and I would, I would appreciate the support from the council to be able to have them redirect back to me. If I have an issue, I'm most certainly willing to talk to the council about it and say, hey, there's an issue, something going on, and, or I reach out to the city attorney and say, yeah, I don't know what to do here. I have a suggestion for the fire department, based on the conversation tonight, and my suggestion is to do a culture assessment for the department right now. Just based on the comments that I'm hearing tonight. I have been in contact with Amy over the past months about the fire department overall, and I think that we've come up with a decent plan. I had a feeling this was going to come up eventually, is that to be able to do a culture assessment of the department overall.
Can you say more about that?
So a culture assessment is done on an individual or group basis. My plan would be to do it on a group basis, very much similar to what the mayor and you had mentioned, Councilman Henderson, is that it would be done on an individual basis, and then the information would be shared back in a general culture assessment of where the department is at currently.
Some sort of an anonymous.
Yeah, well, they'd meet with, they wouldn't meet with me, they would meet with a third party.
Yeah.
And then give me the information so that we know where we're at. And then it would not be shared of, you know, this person said this, this person said that. It would be, here's the general culture that we have right now. And it seemed to have worked in other departments very well, from what I've heard. And based on the comments I'm hearing tonight, I think it would be something that we should look into.
Other departments here?
No.
Right.
Other departments in other cities.
And again, I don't want to limit this to the fire department, I think it's healthy. Again, we go to work, I think a lot of places do it. It's an anonymous discussion about your, your, your relationship with your hierarchy.
Generally culture-related, about how, you know, feelings, thoughts, whatever may happen. And that way, it's anonymous, you know, it's anonymous, it's third-party, it's not other than myself or whatever.
Okay.
I'd say I'd love to know what's going on, so that would help me as well.
I will just say in general, though, not just for this, but period, if I'm being asked to approve a job, a posting, I need to have a job description, period. Like, not just for this, but in the future. Any job that I'm asked to approve, I will need a job description.
Sure. Noted.
Yeah, I think on the cultural, culture study, you know, I, I certainly am familiar with them. The hospital used that in various departments over my time, you know, they called them climate studies, but same thing. It's a different term for that kind of, kind of a survey, and I certainly would support that. I think that the, you know, what Sarah just said about a job description, I think that makes a lot of sense, too, for us to understand. I think ultimately, although we're being asked a specific thing about some hiring tonight, you know, I think that we should have a larger discussion about the model and, you know, and how we're going to get there, whether it's a phase thing, whether it's the one that we, we currently have in progress, or, or what it is. What I don't want to do is be doing staffing schedules. I don't think that's our role. I, I understand where you're coming from, you know, I'm saying, well, you could, you could do it better than this. But I don't think that's our job. In this case, I think we, we should be approving the overall model, and we should be checking in to see if it's working. I don't know, that, that feels too far down in the weeds to me to be saying, you know, this person should be here on Thursdays, and, and the other one should be here on Saturdays. I guess, I guess we can do that if we, you know, if that's what the group wants, but I don't feel like that's our role. I'm sorry that I'm looking at you when I say that.
No, I stare at you too when, when I talk, so it's okay. I'm not offended, I'm okay with that.
All right. A motion? Okay.
Are we, do we, do we need to table this until a climate study? Or don't do anything, because no motion was made in the first place?
Motion's made.
Okay.
There's no approval. And if there are no objections, we will be adjourned. Adjourned.